Hi, hi.
Oh. I don't know if I've heard of anyone. Did you give it back to me? You did. What's that?
I will always do it.
Okay, perfect.
They'll explain. I know. Oh, I know. The Sand Hill.
Yeah.
It's the Sand Hill property.
I don't know.
Ready? Good evening. I'm Shannon Cox, Chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. I welcome all here this evening and call this meeting to order. Can I have the roll call, please?
Roger Dupree?
Here.
Michael Marcot?
Present.
Lucy Bisson, present. Mark Roy?
Here.
Shannon Cox?
Here.
Amy Smith?
Here.
And Alex Alexander-Pine?
Here.
Pine, I'm sorry. And Penthea Burns?
Here.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that we are also supported with our amazing staff this evening. That includes Shelley Norton, our Deputy Director, Craig Tebow, our Land Use Planner, and Linda Tripp, our Administrative Assistant. We also have in our audience, and I am directed to identify other staff in attendance, Public Works Director Kevin Gagne. Great. This evening, as we start with the agenda, I'm looking for any adjustments to the agenda, and I do have one that I'd like to make. We, due to folks being able to be in the room, we are going to take Agenda Item 5B out of order. We'll deal with that after correspondence and before public hearings, and then we'll follow the rest of the agenda in order. Are there any further adjustments to agenda? Great. Is there any correspondence of note?
Member Amy Smith did send an email to the board on April 10th about LD 1167, which is before the legislature this session.
Thank you. Any other correspondence? Great. Then we're going to start with Other Business 5B, and that's the Planning Board making a recommendation on the acquisition of 6 Sand Hill Road. And trying to get my own documents in order. Is that you, Shelley, that'll be supporting this conversation?
Yeah, I can start that off. Once I find it in my packet, my apologies. Give me just a moment.
No, thank you. Same, as I was looking to make sure it's...
It's a merry last time.
Yeah, all the way at the bottom.
And indeed, it is you, Shelley.
Okay.
Please let the record reflect. We're also joined by John Connor, Director of Planning and Co. Welcome. John, as Shelley looks for it, we're taking one agenda item out of order, and we're starting with 5B.
Okay. So the request before you is to make a recommendation to the City Council on the acquisition of a parcel located at 6 Sand Hill Road. This existing property has been used for a number of years as a gravel lot for stockpiling soils by St. Lawrence &amp; Sons. It's 4.47 acres in size. The Public Works has a need to have a fill site. Director Gagne can talk about the types of operations, but when they clean out catch basins, when they do ditch work, and other, you know, kind of dredging of soils, they end up with soil that needs a place to go. They do have a site that they have been using, but they anticipate that it will be full in about a year's time. So they have been looking for a site. This property is valued at, the assessed value is $11,200. And so the request is for the council, sorry, for Planning Board, to make a positive recommendation to the council to purchase the property.
Thank you. Mr. Gagne, I see you sitting behind Tracy Roy's name tag. I don't know if you want to flip that over. Was there anything that you wanted to add before questions from the board?
Good evening. I would just say that we have been using the fill site currently on River Road, and we expected it to last longer than it did. We were previously having contractors bring fill in as well. Currently, it's still internally draining. Police Department is utilizing the site. We're utilizing it as a, kind of a stockyard in the interim with very limited fill. So we're not, it's not open to the public. We closed it down last year, and fill sites around the city have been hard to find. So we've been looking for, since early fall, it came up, and we started having discussions with, at the time, Director Jeffers, to see what was possibly out there that wouldn't take away from retail or development and those type of spaces. So along with myself and engineering and some of the other deputies at Public Works, we kind of did an extensive search citywide, adjacent to more other sites, or what's going on with the Operations Center that's also on River Road. And it just so happens that Gary St. Lawrence contacted us later in the fall and said, hey, we have, would you take interest on this? So that's why we're here before you tonight, to have a recommendation. And then from here, we would look to go to council. We did have an executive session to discuss similar properties and whatnot, so I would need to go back to City Council for approval and funding as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Planning Board?
I'm going to go with Mr. Dupree and then Mr. Marcot.
Kevin, is there any other fill other than the sand that's going to be going in that facility?
In my memo, I did outline unsuitable soils that are part of some of our water main breaks has been utilized for fill sites similar to this. So we have, when a water break happens, typically those soils, if they're granular or saturated, those will drain. We can't put them back in the hole in the middle of January or February, so we typically haul that off, as well as some of the clays, which aren't suitable to put back in for backfill in the roadway. So it would not be any type of contaminated material, just strictly city emergency or maintenance-type material.
No construction?
Primarily, it's catch basin cleaning, storm drain cleaning, any type of Public Works crew repair-type work. Where we can, we try to reuse the material. We do bring and blend some back because we want to, we want to put similar materials back into the excavation, but it needs to be workable and something that we can compact so we don't have settlement. But understand that we can't put, in the old days, we'd put like, you know, six to eight feet of crushed rock. That's not appropriate. So we are blending and using material that we take out of excavations when we can.
No, you're going to be using the current facility until it's full before you start using this facility?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Marcot?
I have a lot of notes here. If I can somehow collect my thoughts and wrap it all up into a package here. Has the slope been engineered?
Yes, our city engineer looked at the existing contours and volumes and read some rough numbers. There's a second image that was supplied tonight that wasn't in the packet that comes from our assessing viewer. It's kind of, I forget the name of the applet, the software package, but it gives you kind of a unique view. So there is kind of a cliff on the backside ledge face. We have access from either the top of Sand Hill to dump debris over the edge, or to fill as it's currently being filled from the, from the access road on the lower level. So the plan would be to build it up in levels and make sure it's a flat area, side slopes two to one, no erosion, make sure it's either internally draining or not causing erosion or flowing offsite, so.
Yeah, I was wondering about potential runoff, seeing as how that was obviously blasted at one point. And can't really see the slope here in a flat picture. Concern would be running across the lower road, that Strawberry Patch?
Correct.
And on down towards Lincoln Street. The materials that are going in it, are they going to be clean?
Materials that I just described. So if there's a catch basin that has, let's say there was an oil spill or gas spill or something, would not be disposed here?
Would not.
Correct. So anything that, you know, DEP, as well as looking at appropriate use on our prior, our current fill site, DEP is deemed catch basin cleaning, street sweepings, and that type of material acceptable for fill area.
Would negatively impact the neighbors on Sand Hill?
We're not looking to do extended hours outside of our normal work hours. Emergency operations might be the exception to that. A water main break through the winter months or whatnot. But to accommodate, we have other spots we can bring it, and then final destination here.
With the estimate of a 10-year fill out, what are the plans beyond capacity? Reuse for some other purpose? Put it back out on the market for development?
Absolutely. We not looking to retain this forever. The current limitations to this are, there is a power line, as you can see, so you've got the right-of-way for CMP in that corridor, so that is pretty much limiting height and under. Those heights are high enough, higher than the street, but we can't fill below that.
And curious as to what this is going to cost the taxpayers of Lewiston as far as their purchase is concerned?
I believe the Director's already offered $11,200, as noted on the first page.
As assessed value?
That's assessed value.
Nobody purchases at assessed value.
That's not asking price, and I'd rather not disclose here for negotiation reasons.
Right.
I think that's wise.
So the plan is to go to executive session with council to discuss land negotiations.
Well, I think we should be invited into that executive session to have a little bit better idea as to whether this is an appropriate use of our limited municipal funds, know whether, I mean, we've acquired things in the past, and only to have a net negative return on investment. And that's my concern here.
For our own clarifications, is that in our purview, or is that finance or council?
Yeah, so that will be council. It doesn't go to Finance Committee.
Thank you.
I think it is in our purview. We're the keepers of the comp plan. There's a financial component of the comp plan. Everything we do comes down to the financial well-being of this community. So cost to benefit.
So the proposed funding to be used for this would be the stormwater fund, due to the nature of catch basin cleaning, storm drain cleaning, and that type of work, so.
Thanks. I did know Mr. Dupree had a follow-up question, but I want to hear from other members of the board if there are, that we haven't. Alex?
Sure. I'm curious about the, probably be easier if we could pull this up, but I guess it would be the southern property line, so that's where it looks like it's maybe a budding the CMP right-of-way. Is that, is that the case? Just sort of looking at the aerial that we were provided tonight, you know, it sort of seems like there's sort of a natural border at the road is like, that's where the fill will stop, you know? That's sort of the natural slope of the hill as is. But when you look at the property line, the property line goes sort of straight through the middle of that, and I'm wondering how that affects how it's going to fill out. I mean, as you noted, you know, there's a power line there, so development might be sort of challenging, but just curious about that.
Correct. So the, I think it's the property line and more adjacent, parallel to Lincoln Street and Strawberry Patch Road. That line is the boundary with CMP, and that's where our estimate of volume started from that grade up at a two to one, plateauing off up against the ledge face. The access, you can see it kind of jogs out for Sand Hill Road, so there, adjacent parcels are just that, either private property owners for each house, or I know Franklin Property is in this area as well, so. Did I answer your question? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Roger?
Kevin, the tree line that's on the left-hand side where it curves from Sand Hill Road, is that going to be utilized, or is that going to stay with the trees?
We're not proposing to cut beyond what is, so the second, if you have the second view, there's the, what you see is gravel and bare soils now. The plan was not to expand into the tree vegetated area and cut any trees, was to plan the open space that's there now.
So everything is just going to be in that perimeter of the ledges?
Correct. You kind of see an access road, kind of gravel road through the middle.
Yep.
So that's the higher elevation access road at the top of the rock face. We're not looking to cut trees to the south, any closer to Sand Hill Road.
Thank you.
Any last questions from the board? Okay, then I'd be looking for someone to make a motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
Make a motion pursuant to Article 8, Section 4H of the Zoning and Land Use Code to send a favorable recommendation to the City Council for the acquisition of 6 Sand Hill Road with no conditions.
And please reflect that it's Article 7.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roger, can we call the roll?
Yes. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
No.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Okay, great. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a lovely night. Okay, so we're going to go back to our regularly scheduled agenda, which brings us to Public Hearings A. Stony Brook Land Use, Inc., on behalf of Gendron Realty LLC, has submitted a development approval extension request for the development of Lot 15 of the Gendron Business Park at 23 Gendron Drive, which was approved by, on May 8th, 2023. I know that, I think I've got quite a packet, but Shelley, are you kicking this one off?
Yes. So this project was approved for... Oh, sorry. I'm looking at the wrong thing.
I know. I think, I want to make sure we've got them in order, too.
Um... I apologize.
Yeah, Lot 15, 23 Gendron.
Give me just a minute.
I will say, all of them on Stony Brook heading make them look similar.
Okay.
At first glance.
So this project on Lot 15 was approved for 140,000 square foot building with a total impervious area of 7.52 acres, with the stormwater being directed to a detention pond on Lot 17. It was approved on May 8th, 2023. So they're almost at their expiration, so they're requesting a two-year extension of approval, which if granted, would expire on May 8th of 2027. And I passed out the staff comments this evening, which has a sample motion on it that wasn't part of your original packet.
Thanks. I know we're joined by the applicant. Do we want to invite the applicant up at this time?
Up to the board if you have questions for him, but yeah.
Do you care to present on each or any of your items tonight, or just respond to questions?
Not on these two extensions. Unless you get questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Thanks.
I'll pull up an image.
And as Shelley pulls that up, questions from the board? Mr. Marcot?
Question for Ms. DeGatto. Are there any opportunities in the pipeline for this Lot 15?
I'm not aware of any at the moment. It's probably going to take most of the two-year extension to finish the site work. It's, it's a, it's a big project. Most of the fill is in on that lot, but there is some blasting to be done. And then we also have to finish the detention pond on Lot 17, so it turned out to be much bigger projects than expected, and now he has a much smaller crew than he used to have, so it's taking longer to get to the development, so.
Thank you. Other questions? Hearing none, I am going to officially open it up for public comment. I always find this part fun when there's no one in the audience, but opening it up for public comment on this item for Lot 15, seeing that there is no public streaming in from the hallway or in the room. I'll close it and bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from the board?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion pursuant to Article 13, Section 11 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to grant a two-year extension of the May 8th, 2024 Development Review Approval to Gendron Realty LLC for the amendment of the Development Review of 23 Gendron Drive, was it 23? 23 Gendron Drive, Lot 5 at Gendron Business Park until May 8th, 2027, to start construction.
Lot 15.
Yeah, it's Lot 15. Please, nope.
Oh, that is, that's not what I said. Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thought I said that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, can we call the roll?
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, sir. We'll now move to public hearing B. Stony Brook Land Use, Inc., on behalf of General Realty LLC, has submitted a Development Approval Extension Request for the development of Lots 16 and 17 of the Gendron Business Park at 35 Priscilla Drive, which were approved on one plan on May 8th, 2023. Shelley, I believe our memo is from you.
This project was approved for a 51,605 square foot building and 3.24 acres of impervious on Lot 16, and a 71,470 square foot building with 5.27 acres of impervious on Lot 17. The stormwater on both parcels would go to the new detention pond that was approved on Lot 17. The project is located at 3 and 5 Priscilla Drive. It was approved on May 8th of 2023, so if the, so the extension, if granted, would expire on May 8th of 2027.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the board? Any comments from the applicant? Any specific questions for the applicant from the board? Seeing Alex Pine?
Yeah. I'm assuming that the same sort of reasons for delay for the other extension apply to this as well, similar?
Yes. There is an awful lot of blasting to be done on these two lots, and then the blast material will be used to some extent to help build the access road down to build a detention pond. So there's just a lot of, lot of effort that needs to be done, and so a couple of years is going to give us time to get that done.
Got it. Got it, got it.
Thanks. Any other questions? If not, I'd be looking for a motion?
No, you need to open it up to the public.
Oh, right. Thank you so much. All night long. I'd like to open this up for public hearing, noting for the record that there is no public in the room, nor have any streamed in from the hallway, and closing the public hearing. Any further discussion from the board? Nope.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion pursuant to Article 13, Section 11 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to grant a two-year extension of the May 8th, 2024 Development Review Approval to Gendron Realty LLC for the amendment of the Development Review of 3 and 5 Priscilla Drive, Lots 16 and 17, at Gendron Business Park until May 8th, 2027, to start construction.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Any other discussion about the motion? Can we call the roll?
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Item C. D. Gendron Construction, Inc. has submitted a Development Review Application for Lot 10 in the Gendron Business Park for the construction of a 15,300 square foot commercial building at 19 Gendron Drive, and I believe, Mr. Tebow, this is yours to share.
Happy to. So this property is located in the Gendron Business Park. It is an eight-acre vacant parcel currently, and as noted, it will be proposed to build a approximately 15,300 square foot structure, which will be divided into two units. It will be used for sort of industrial use, although that hasn't been specified. The industrial zoning district does allow for a wide range of different uses, including industrial uses as defined in our code, building and construction contractors, wholesale sales, warehousing, and distribution facilities. We have reviewed this project under the parking standards, under the lighting standards, under the general, you know, broadly speaking, the Development Review Standards. It meets all standards that we've reviewed it. The applicant does, has applied for two waivers for the stormwater management, which has been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department. Separately, they have applied for a waiver from the driveway opening standards and policies that also will need to be reviewed and approved by Public Works. Let's see here. Fire and police had no concerns or no comments with the project. Planning staff's initial comments have been addressed. Those included additional street, street trees. Those have been added. Public Works had some comments, and those have been largely addressed, but there are some remaining that have been added into the conditions of approval. There are four staff recommendations. I won't read through them all, but there are four staff recommendations, and at the bottom, you'll see a recommended motion.
Thank you, which would include all four of those at a minimum conditions. Thanks very much. Is there any presentation you'd like to make on this one, and any questions as he gets settled for staff specifically from the board? Mr. DeGatto?
There are a couple of comments that I had for this one. This lot has moved forward quicker because someone was interested in a unit on Lot 16, and it's not going to be done in time, so they're moving this one forward to try to make space for that tenant that we had on this lot here. I believe, under recommendation, staff recommendation number one, that we had talked about recording the stormwater buffer prior to occupancy. This says prior to building permits. I'm not sure if that's what you recall or not, but I thought that's what we talked about, was prior to occupancy.
Thanks, Mr. DeGatto. Can I get clarification from the staff before we move on?
Yeah.
Can you offer some reflections on that?
I would. I really have to defer to Public Works there. This was my understanding of what their recommendation was, but if there's any sort of uncertainty, that would have to be referred to Public Works.
Yeah, I guess I would ask the applicant what the hardship is with doing that at the time of building permit.
Because they're probably going to be in here tomorrow for building permit?
I'm sorry, they're going to be...
It's probably going to be coming soon for a building permit, and it's probably going to take a month to get the survey work done. That's, that's one of the reasons why, when I went back and forth with John, in my response letter, I indicated that I understood we were going to take that as a condition of occupancy. The other thing that's, that's interesting about these stormwater buffers is, they really should be field-located, and the buffer should go where the, where the level spread is put, okay? So which will come during construction. We want to move forward with this project. If the condition has to be the way it is, I'll have to figure a way around it, but it's going to take time to get that, that survey work done so that we can get an easement drafted and recorded at the registry. So, you know, that's, that's where that is.
I'm looking for a solution in my head, and I'm thinking, did you have an item? Sorry.
I was just wanting to clarify, that's for recommendation number one?
Yeah.
Yes, that's recommendation number one.
I would, that's what I was, thank you, because that's what I was looking at. Could, if the, this is a question for staff first and then Mr. DeGatto, so bear with us, Mr. DeGatto?
Yeah.
But if condition number one was restated to read within 30 days of a building permit being issued, based on the lead time that you just named for survey work... building permit being issued based on the lead time that you just named for survey work, would that be amenable? And if you don't know, because you're not the engineer in Public Works, then like, this is the moment to say it.
I think it probably would, I guess, um, my bigger concern is it's always easier for staff to track things before a building permit than to chase things when we're looking for a CO. So we try to front-load those types of conditions when we can. So, I don't know if there's other thoughts from staff.
John?
Since my name was referenced, um, I believe, I, my understanding, uh, Mr. Gatto, was our conversation was regarding, uh, a different property, a different development, when we said we could do the, um, the application, I'm sorry, the, um, providing that, you know, before the occupancy permit?
That, you're, you're correct, there was another project that you and I talked about
Right.
that was gonna be at occupancy that year.
Right.
I don't think you were involved in the back and forth of.
On this one? Okay, correct.
So yes, you're right, there was another project that you had.
Okay.
You had, uh, that Shelley brought up just the other day.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're not ready to pull permits yet, but, um, that project there, where I was talking about, uh, a plan being done at occupancy.
Gotcha.
This one here is an easement plan that, um, you know, most of the area that this easement's in is already an easement, but, uh, conservation easement, but, uh, if staff is uncomfortable and board's uncomfortable, we'll, we'll work around it. I, I got this staff report Friday, so, you know, and they're not in, uh, on Friday, so.
Well, I think we got the staff report today, right?
Yeah.
It was posted to the website on Thursday and emailed on Thursday.
Yeah, thanks.
And again, that's fine, I don't wanna cause people.
No, no, it, I mean, it's worth the question and I think we've asked it and both cleared your name on this particular item, but I don't know that we got to an answer, so I'm just checking back in.
I, I don't know as we have either because, um, I, Craig was the one involved with communication with Public Works and I'm not sure, you know, I don't know.
Where did Kevin run off to?
Yeah.
He was just here!
Um, it was, so I can say, I, you know, Mike Gatto, what he's saying is, you know, I saw his email that it was his understanding that the, um, the condition would be based on the, uh, certificate of occupancy, um, but of course that.
If you were able to access your email right now and verify the thread in communications, would that be beneficial while we hear the rest of the presentation and answer, ask and answer questions? I say that because if this is just simply a typo, this is a really great time for us to correct it. And if it is not insubstantively important that it is worded the way that it is.
I, I don't know if it's a typo as, as far as it was not specified by Public Works in their email, while it was, uh, heavily implied by the applicant in their email.
Yeah, so I'm, I guess, I appreciate that.
I can confirm if Public Works would agree with the applicant's, uh, position or not, basically. So I went with the more conservative, uh, position.
Uh, so you were aware of some discrepancy and we went in erring on the side of safety because it wasn't clear? So you actually do know that it wasn't clear? There's no reviewing your email to ensure clarity?
Uh, that's right, I would.
Okay.
Basically have to email Public Works right now and try to get a response.
Thanks, that's helpful.
So, is, is the normal process to do this before issuing a permit and then occupancy afterwards?
Well, in, like I say, in my experience, it has been, as Shelley's mentioned, front-loaded.
And Mr. Gatto, is this, poses significant cost or burden on you?
It's not a cost, it's a time issue.
Okay.
It's, it's a timing issue, okay? We, we have the tenant that's ready to go and they're ready to go with the building permits and stuff, as I understand it. They haven't issued, they haven't gone in yet because we haven't got your approval, as far as I know, they haven't gone in yet, but my talking with my client, they're ready to come in for a building permit.
Yeah, my, my feeling would be, just to continue with what would be the normal process.
And if I may, Madam Chair, so we, we have had some discussions with Public Works on other matters where this type of language has come up with requiring a permit. Um, we have had discussions where does that mean a building permit or does it mean an occupancy permit? So there is, there is some, some recent, um, you know, history on that portion of it, just for your unification.
Thank you. When it feels like, and this is for the board's purpose and not specific to you, but it sounds like if there is some clarifying, this is one of the points in which maybe our process being front-loaded for ease of chasing for staff, which is a very good reason, might also not fit the business needs of folks who are looking for an expedited process to get to building. And that maybe that's the tension point in our kind of internal process improvements and it, I'm glad that that discussion's being, uh, is occurring behind the scenes because I think those are the right tension points to explore. That's what I hear you expressing today.
Yeah, I, again, it started as, um, we were gonna need to do an amended subdivision plan and I questioned, and as I do for my clients, I push staff very hard, okay, to try to get things done. And, uh, um, it came back and forth and I agree with, with Craig that I don't know that Public Works responded to occupancy versus building permit. I don't know if they did or not, I, I'd have to go through my emails, uh, I, I'm not, I just thought the discussion had got to the point that it was gonna be occupancy so we could keep the process moving forward. But again, uh, we'll, uh, we'll go with what the board does and. Next time we'll make it clearer.
Yeah, I would look for that next time for.
Yeah.
For the home team as well, but, um, I appreciate that we can move forward if the language is written today.
Yeah.
Though it might have been different than when.
I, I felt it was worth bringing it up because I thought it was done, but.
Appreciate it.
If Craig didn't get that, then I'm, I'm good with what he's telling us.
Thank you. Did you have more to offer?
I did not, I, I could answer any questions, I mean, this, this is a small project, you know, again, it's in Gendron Park, so it's, uh, it's pre-done with stormwater and stuff. Um, we, I guess, got the waiver for the, uh, uh, stormwater, uh, as long as we do the easement. Uh, I think we're still waiting for a waiver on, um, the driveway widths from Public Works as well.
And that's been written into the condition?
Yeah.
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 Questions for the applicant from the board, Mr. Markot?
Yeah, seeing as how you already have a tenant, uh, and, uh, what, what's the timeline like, uh, till the tenant occupies?
Um, I'm guessing that they would try to be occupying by fall.
By fall, this year.
We, we had to order the building already because of the tariffs, okay, so somehow we worked our way through that mess, uh, because this building comes from Canada, as most of the Mirox buildings do, that, uh, K and M buildings that Dave builds. So he's worked that out, I was dealing with some foundation issues with them last week and they're ready to go and, um, they, they're able to grade the site and get the site prepped, uh, already, so they're working on that. Uh, so there's some work on that site that has to be done, but typically one of the first things they'll do is put the foundation in the ground and go from there.
It would be nice to have a taxable property before April first of next year.
It would be, yeah.
And I'd like to thank you for a couple of items I saw on the pack. One is the letter of financial capacity, we don't always see that. And, um, I didn't actually read every line of this, but I, I see some downlighting, uh, is there downlighting on the property? Or I didn't know if it was just something that made it in the packet anyway, because I've had some issue with downlighting in the community, as the director knows.
We are specific with the lighting companies that we're working with to make sure that all lines, all lights are cut off and downward, downward things for, for the building, so that's, that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, out in that area, it may not be as, uh, import as, uh, other places in Lewiston, intersections and such, but, um, and I have no, i- is the request to eliminate, uh, uh, staff recommendation number one in the process?
I know, I think that we have to have an easement recorded in the registry, so we're not, I'm, I'm not gonna ask you.
Just change the language from building to occupancy?
I think what we landed on was keeping the language as written in number one with further clarity from a process perspective, that sounds like it's ongoing and insurance that any questions have been asked and answered by Public Works and other department parties before the memo is written, comes before us, but today we'll be considering the language out of it.
Um, staff, staff has had a conversation over here, we're comfortable with thirty days after a building permit is issued, sort of this time, and we'll chase it.
Love that.
Yep.
That way there won't be any delay.
Yeah, that sounds great, thank you so much, staff, because I think that's a really wonderful compromise and so.
I thank you for giving us that idea.
It's nice to find a middle ground, so, um, for whomever might make a motion, number one of conditions, then, to your point, Mr. Markot would read, um, within thirty days of the issuance of building permits and then the rest as written? Whoever might make a motion? Are you clear with that, Mr. Gatto, and that word is for you as well, thank you. Staff, thank you so much for finding a compromise, I appreciate that. Hopefully we don't have to do that often, but it's nice when we can. Mr. Markot, did you have other questions?
Nope.
Thanks, other questions from the board? Mr. Pine? Yeah.
Just for clarity and for the record, I'm assuming the width of the driveway is wider than normal to allow for tractor-trailers to enter into the site?
Yeah, it's, it came to our knowledge, you know, this last month, that they have a new driveway opening permit and they define the driveway as the extension of the lines coming down to the road. Uh, we have a thirty-foot driveway, they allow a maximum driveway width, uh, curb cut, uh, of thirty-six feet on your ordinance. I have a twenty-foot fillet and a forty-something foot, forty-five foot fillet on one side, so our driveways are seventy-one feet curb cut and, uh, seventy-four feet curb cut. And, you know, if you don't do that, our turning movements that we provided for you, for the board to look at, you can see that the red lines would go over the curb, uh, at the driveway openings. So it's consistent with what we need to get tractor-trailers. All of Dave's buildings are drawn, are done so that he can have tractor-trailer unit deliveries in the rear and drive-in box trucks or vans, uh, up in the upper level at the, at the front level. Um, it makes it marketable and he's been able to fill all of his buildings because of this layout that we do.
So.
Can I ask a, a follow-up clarity question and I'll give it back?
Sure, sure.
You said they changed the dri, who's they?
Public Works.
Thank you.
Yeah, Public Works has a new driveway opening policy.
Okay.
And this is, I guess, where I was going, is so if we have a building type that doesn't seem super exotic to me, you know, this style of industrial building seems, you know, pretty standard, um, and we have a driveway standard that doesn't meet the needs of that form, it sounds like maybe there's sort of like some tweaking that needs to happen, you know, this is one of those, like, are we gonna constantly be issuing, uh, waivers for?
The waiver's not to the board, the waiver is to Public Works.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, so if we don't get that waiver, then we have to change the driveway.
Yes, or I guess, um, yeah, uh, maybe it isn't within our purview, but still, uh, if these waivers are, uh, gonna just sort of continually be coming up in our applications, I wonder if there's some tweaking that needs to happen there or, or, you know, finding some middle ground, like, um, I forget what they're called, but where they do sort of like the partial curb, so like, you know, the width of the, the normal driving area for a light-duty vehicle is within the standard and then you can drive up over the curb, over the apron for a larger vehicle.
Yeah, I, again, something's gotta be tweaked, I mean, I did it, I, I told you, or the, the other driveway that we're doing into the employee parking, it's thirty feet wide with twenty-foot fillets, well, if I wanted to keep the twenty-foot fillets, I'd have a negative four-foot driveway.
It, it'd be helpful too, if there's been a change of which the board might be considering waivers for Public Works or the applicants, that we are educated on what that change was, the intention behind it, so that we can do this part well.
And just to clarify, it is a waiver, Public Works grants, not this board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it was just something they said, you know, submit, so we've, we've submitted it, it's been there since first of March, I think, somewhere, March fifth or something.
Yeah.
So then we're granting permission to Public Works to grant the waiver?
Not, no, it's, it's a condition of approval, it would be a separate approval that they would need to get from Public Works, but we just wouldn't, um, you know, finalize, we wouldn't move forward with a building permit, uh, under your approval without that approval from Public Works.
Yeah. So I, I think, yeah, my request would be more around, yeah, education on this, uh, encouraging Public Works to maybe consider the standards, I love, Shannon, your point of like, it's good for us to know, even though we're not really voting on the waiver, um, but I think often, you know, we're thinking about how properties and buildings interact with the street, how they interact with the neighborhood around it, and I think understanding stuff like that helps with that decision.
If it truly had nothing to do with us, it wouldn't be a condition that we had to re, review and give voice to today. Like I get, I, I think.
That's not really true, I mean.
Okay.
If someone needs a DEP permit, we would have a condition of approval that they get that permit, you have no purview over that permit and granting it. Or like a permit from DOT or Army Corps of Engineers, so it'd be similar to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except that it's inside city and coming from a department within city instead of layered on by external agencies with power over the city? That's helpful. Alex, was that all your questions?
Uh, and then, you know, I was gonna do my standard plug for, um, you know, I, I actually, um, a friend of mine worked in the business park at one of the buildings that's further up Gendron Drive, um, looked at taking the bus to work rather than, you know, having to pay for the maintenance on a car and stuff, lives in town, would have been easy, but, um, you know, I know this is probably a bigger issue in terms of how the street is built and the whole neighborhood is built, but, you know, walking down there is tough, right? There's no sidewalk on the street from what I remember.
There's no sidewalk, there's, uh, plenty of width in the pavement.
Yeah.
And I, I do see people occasionally walking down the edge of the pavement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, and, and that's what my friend did, but I think, uh, encouraging the applicant as this gets developed, you know, I know there's already a lot here, but making sure there's facilities for people coming in on bikes and maybe walking in, um, you know, uh, yeah, just keep it in the back of your mind, not, not something to, uh, hold this up or make anyone's life difficult, but.
You know, this is a city street now, city right away, so it would take permission from the city to do those kind of improvements, but.
Mm-hmm.
Often you guys will recommend that those happen, so.
Yeah.
Understood.
Thanks. Other questions from the board? Mr. Dupree?
Michael, uh, can you tell us what type of a tenant it is? Is it a manufacturing, warehousing?
I don't, I don't know, you know, and he's had a variety of distrib, distributors, uh, slight manufacturing, he has office use, he has engineering use, he has a bunch of different things. I don't know the tenant, he, he's pretty quiet and doesn't want a lot of people to know who he's talking to, um, so I don't know who the tenant is, but I know that they're gonna occupy one of the units.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing that this is a public hearing, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I'm gonna note again that the room is empty and again that no one's coming in from the hallway. Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment. Any final questions from the board? Mr. Markot?
Will they make the motion?
Great.
Just to understand that, uh, you're okay with all the motions with this slight amend, uh, change to the number one, right? Make a motion that the application submitted by D Gendron Construction Inc. for the construction of a new fifteen thousand, three hundred square foot commercial building located in Gendron Business Park, lot ten at nineteen Gendron Drive, meets all of the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article thirteen, section four, approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions. Number one. Can you read my own handwriting?
Within thirty days.
Within, okay, the word was a within. Now, within thirty days of the issuance of any building permits, a stormwater buffer easement shall be provided. This will include recording at the Andrews Garden Registry of Deeds, a stamped plan and easement document encumbering the required area for the purposes of a stormwater treatment buffer. Two, prior to the issuance of any building permits, the city shall receive approval for delegated review, authority from the main department of environmental protection. Number three, that, uh, that prior to the issuance of any building permits, a waiver from the driveway opening standards and policies shall be reviewed and approved by Public Works. Four, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan.
Second. Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Can we call the roll? Yeah, Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Safe travels back. Yep. Okay, we're gonna move to other business. A, continued discussion on the content for drafting a planned unit development ordinance. Have we reached agreement on whether we are referring to this as PUDs or PUDs? Because I'm just looking for, just curiosity. It'd be a lot, a long day with a lot of acronyms.
I like PUD.
Right, can we, as I've described it to others, I think PUD turns more eyes, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't think there's consensus from staff, so.
Oh, good. All right, so we'll just use your favorite flavor and we'll try them all out.
Could be few.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be fun?
Uh, all right, so we're gonna get underway. We're picking up a conversation from last time. For my own framing, and then I'll hand it back over to, to staff, I'm seeing a red line document that reflects some of the conversations that we had last time. We took a length-of-day pause, I think, at Section 6? At, or at the end of? I know that we've got some stuff in here, but I think some of that came from where we were referencing density bonuses in other discussion items. I'm not sure that we made it through Number 6. And if anyone recollects, then that's great, and if not, then we'll pick it up in 6 and review changes as well. Mostly, I'm looking through the best way to move through this today. Alex?
So I think we did get into 6. Because looking at the red line item on Line 3 in Section 6 talks about plazas, and that's, that is my last memory before we called it.
Yeah, but that was, you had jumped ahead.
Yep, and so--
There was, there was a jump ahead that happened, and I added that in 6.
Yeah, I don't think that we got to 6. I think the red lines in 6 are references--
Got it.
To some of the other conversation points where we named so--
So 5?
Yeah, like, it was just--
Okay.
We love this, and that would be incentivized with a density bonus. Put a pin in density bonuses, and I don't think we'd actually opened discussion on Section 6, though we had informed it. So Shelley, I would--
I, I think Section 5 was where we were starting tonight.
Yeah.
Was my recollection.
Could we pull up the minutes, perhaps, that tell us where we're?
Sure. Yes.
Well, once, once we've got, I have a couple of questions on--
Content.
On content prior to--
Yeah, yeah.
Five, okay?
So I, that's, I'm just trying to make sure we're all aligned on process. I would say if we're not sure, we should probably review it. If you can't recall, then it's worth a discussion, I would say. I'd love it if, and Lucy, let me know if this works for you in your question, I'd love it if staff wants to just overview the changes in Section 1 through 5 and get us into 6 and maybe back into jogging our memory. And Lucy, did you have specific questions that would guide staff doing that? Or would you rather bring your questions up as we move through the edits to the content?
It's just a couple of clarifications that I, I would like. I can do them now. You know, on one D.I., it requires a theme, and theme, the word "theme" continues through this whole thing. Is there a definition of theme? Because what I'm thinking, theme is a buccaneer park or, or Disney park, you know? I, I mean, I think we need to clarify what "theme" means, and I understand later on there are things about, well, there's a theme of having more outdoor spaces, but I think we need, the theme, the word "theme" needs to have some kind of clarification, because somebody could jump in and say, oh, well, we'll, we'll do a pirate theme. And, and--
I look forward to the day on the planning board that a pirate-themed PUD comes in front of the board.
I would almost approve it just on principle.
Yeah. So from a process perspective, let's, let's take a stab at that question, and then see if there's any other questions and items that Shelley would lift up. For one, we'll take it section by section before you jump in the other one.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Anything specific to request for definition of "theme"?
Themes have to, you know--
No, I, I think that providing some examples would be helpful, too, so we can do that.
Yeah, I, you know, that, that's basically what I'm thinking.
Definition and a couple of examples of types of themes, yep. We can definitely do that.
Because I did watch the, the meeting last, last time, so.
Yeah, I would say it made more sense to us as we left that meeting than before we entered it.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think that's right.
But I think for, for somebody who's coming in, a developer or whatever, I think the clearer we can make our terms, the better, ask Mr. Goddard, the better it, it is for them to try to work within what we're trying to decide.
Shelley, do you want to walk us through the edits that we're looking at, and any specific notes or questions that are outstanding? And then we'll hear any questions around Section 1 before we move to Section 2?
So in Section 1, I've eliminated the reference in A3 to commercial, professional, and residential because at the last meeting, we talked about adding industrial uses as well to, to PUDs. Under Number 5, just added workforce housing as well as affordable housing as a promotion. Under Number 6, removed affordable or workforce, so that one is purely about promoting owner occupancy. Which maybe ownership opportunities would be a better way to say that, based on what the board is looking for? I'm not sure.
No, ownership opportunities, I could buy it and rent it to Michael. So owner-occupied, I think, is a better term, because that's what we want. We want people to own it and live there.
Okay. Well, yes, yes, and, well, I think fundamentally, when you get into the weeds of what we talked about and what I feel like we are moving towards in terms of alternative ownership models, so like, how does a cooperative-- Go ahead. How does a cooperative ownership model fits into this? Because I think the intent is around commitment to and investment in both material and like philosophical commitment to the PUD. And so I think some of that could come from, I own this parcel, and now because I own this parcel, I'm invested, and therefore I care about the PUD and the community it's in. I think some of the conversation we had is folks who are in a collective or a cooperative who don't own the parcel and/or the unit, but have ownership and investment in the PUD itself, if there was a collective ownership model, that that's, it's the less transient and long-term investment in community slash the PUD itself that we talked about being linked to incentivizing, right? So like, no out-of-town landlords, the ability to, some of it is around increasing equity and actual ownership, and some of it is around philosophical ownership and buy-in and commitment. And so I don't know if this language should get at both of those or differentiate the two. I saw Alex and then Amy.
Yeah, and I think, sort of piggybacking on that, like, we, I think we talked about sort of like ownership in a broad sense, even beyond housing, so like, striking housing from this, just like, I mean, it's really, to your point, Shannon, like promoting ownership in the project, whether that is, I own my little square of the project, or I own, you know, three shares of the project.
My stall of the light industrial manufacturing that's on the back of another project, like it was business, too, yeah.
I think just, yeah, promoting, you know, uh, I don't know how we, because I think there is, to Lucy's point, you know, something valuable of like, you own it and you have some relationship to the place. And so maybe owner-occupied is just like the easiest way to just get at that, or just like, yeah, I don't know, but I, I get where you're coming from, too, Shannon, so.
Well, it's not where I'm coming from.
Striking housing would be my, my most concrete--
I'm reflecting back our conversation collectively as a board, because I think, I think it is a situation of both and. And I don't know if it's ownership and long-term investment in stewardship of the community, that, that kind of nature of language, and I do hear an "and." Amy?
So, a, a specific term we've used in working with Craig with like the RASOP, it would be like owner-occupied or resident-controlled? Housing or units or whatever it is we're trying to get at? Because the whole idea is that the people who live there are in charge of the unit.
I like that.
And because of that are making a commitment to, a longer-term commitment? Mr. Roy?
Yeah, I just want to point out that, you know, this is just for the purpose. It's one of many purposes. I, I agree that, I think, the, how did you phrase it? Owner-controlled?
Resident.
Resident-controlled. I think adding resident-controlled would be sufficient to owner-occupied housing, but ultimately, we're just trying to communicate the overall purpose or one of the overall purposes of establishing a PUD.
So, could I make a proposal for language change?
You can, but I'd like to have my personal thoughts in after.
Sure.
If that's okay. And is there anyone else that we haven't heard from yet? Mr. Mark?
I'm okay with the language as edited in this packet.
Thanks. My, my only two cents is given, given that this is the purpose section, because if we were talking about density bonuses relative to ownership styles in a different section, I think a lot of the parsing language here would matter more, and I think it is, right? And it's about purpose, and because of that, when you look at the richness that we have offered in A7, I think that if what we're really trying to promote is like stewardship, long-term commitment, I think that's where you say it here, because it's not about housing necessarily, and it's not about owner-occupied of a parcel of which I personally own and it's only mine, and some of those narrow, from, like, there's probably spaces in this document for that, but I think there's room for 6 to say, this is about promoting deeper ownership, investment, and stewardship of neighborhoods or developments. And like, that's the purpose of it, and then in other places, we can talk about ownership models and whether it's housing or other uses, or, and I only offer that because of what you've already offered around purpose in 7. Alex, oh, Penn?
Curious about item number 4 in this list. Why, where appropriate would be needed there?
Uh, yeah, so we're not requiring a PUD to have open space under this. So if somebody wanted to do a PUD on a downtown parcel that really didn't have much opportunity for open space, they, you know, they wouldn't be required to. It would really depend on their theme. So if their theme is around affordability or ownership or something like that, and not around preserving space, then that wouldn't be a requirement that they would include it. And then our standards in Article 13 for, let's say, multifamily housing, so that there be some active area provided would apply only.
So my next question, um, are all of these items meant to be addressed in a PUD or a PUD? Or is it some of these? So like, to me, like, I got to Item 7, and I thought, does, do we have an "and" Number 7? Or an "or" Number 7?
Good question.
So it just, to me, it would speak to that same thing, if that's just one of the things that could be addressed. I, I wouldn't mind that being dropped, myself.
I, I would second that in part, because like, if it's a commercial or industrial PUD, then we're not saying, "And you have to throw in housing." So like, I think the where appropriate doesn't feel necessary, if this is like, we're doing this in general, because we would like to see these things incentivized in whichever way they work for your own personal PUD?
Maybe A could read just like some or all of the following.
Yes.
Something like that.
And I'd love to also say, I loved reading this. I just, I want to express gratitude to what you all put together, and this feels exciting for, to be, being addressed, so, so thanks a lot.
Thanks.
And Shelley.
Oh, and Craig.
To, to Alex's point, I, I don't know if there's like a purpose that's overarching and not out of A, but like, I think, I think it's a really good point that actually the purpose is to encourage development in the city of Lewiston that does these things. And it's not specific to the development coming forward in the one PUD that we're considering. And that, some of that's like how this gets framed in your ordinance, but I think, I, I don't think it's either or. We are having this conversation, and we're considering putting a PUD ordinance in place for all of these reasons, of which any development might hit on any or some or all of those things, right? To Penthea's point, so.
I, I love the language in, in Item D below. The second half should be employed where there is benefit from its use for the community and its users. I mean, to me, that just really started defining the purpose in that kind of overarching way.
Yeah, thanks. Are you all set? Thank you. Alex?
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, for 6, talking about it, to your point, Shannon, of just like promoting, you know, investment in, you know, a community, whether that be owner-occupation, collective ownership, or other ways for, you like, because I think it--
Whatever the synonym is for ownership that makes it clear it's not about the transaction of ownership, but it's ownership like, I own that Lewiston is my community, without having to own all the parcels in Lewiston and be able to say that, that version of ownership, I think, is what that would be getting at.
Yeah, and, but I think there is value in like, since this is kind of outside the normal, like, how development happens, like, like, it could be really concrete. You're like giving everyone a little, a little deed to something. Or, you know, like, so I guess--
Yeah.
Maybe to make this clear, like, it needs to have this, the philosophical thing, and then like a little "and parentheses, here's a couple of the concrete ways that this could look like." Just so people kind of get it.
I have just a weird technical question. In Item 5, given where we've named language and reference specifically for affordable housing in that title, is there the need at some point in the final draft to throw some title and sections relative to workforce housing behind it?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and--
We're just reviewing Section 1 right now. We're gonna get all the way to starting a new section, which is 6. And so if there's anything you'd like to provide outside of the meeting that is useful to staff, that is also an option, please go ahead.
Okay. I think one thing that I remember from our previous conversation on this was that we, I remember we sort of like heard workforce housing, and we were like, wait a second. Or we heard affordable housing, and we're like, wait a second, we're not, we're not, like, that's important, but, and that's how workforce got in there. I wonder, like, if, I don't know how you would say it, but like, I think the spirit that I heard in some of that conversation last time wasn't even, and maybe workforce housing is what we're talking about, but like starter homes, like with housing, like, so like, not even-- I, I don't know how to capture that, but just like, you know, housing stock--
Home ownership?
Yeah, yeah, but like, I, again, I don't, you know, maybe that's workforce, maybe that, I don't know. But like, that's what I, I sort of remember people going like, no, we could, we should just have like market rate. It doesn't have to be anything, it just needs to be something other than an expensive house with a lot of bedrooms, or something other than, you know--
And we named that we also would like to incentivize and support that, when that makes sense, too.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
My, my concern isn't particularly with workforce or affordable or anything. It's solely with owners living in their properties. I don't care if they--
What it is.
Yeah, I don't care if it's their starter home or their last home. Owners in their properties, because owners who live in their properties generally care about the community that they live in and invest in the community they live in. That's all I care about.
I agree. Amy?
I, I agree, too, in that people understand what that means, that phrase, owner-occupied. So I think it's a good concrete phrase to include. We might add other things like co-ops, but I wouldn't delete that.
Thanks. Staff, you got enough. Go on to finesse any outstanding pieces in Section 1?
Uh, so getting back to Number 6.
Yeah.
So promoting owner-occupied and resident-controlled housing? I, I know that doesn't get at the philosophy part of this.
I think we heard some comments about it being reflective of not just housing, so like, that could--
Yeah.
That investment, and so if you end up with a PUD, I'm just gonna chime all out. If you end up with a PUD that is a commercial or business, that there, there is a model, as described in all the other things, that allows business, startup even, businesses to own and have some ownership, that, that with this could, I think this is to your point, and if I can expand it to businesses or even industrial, which is also business, that it is about the ownership and the continued investment and caring about, relative to all the different pieces. And so it might be owner-occupied housing and businesses. Like, I'm not trying, to Amy's point, I'm not trying to erase owner-occupied or housing, but I think that it was broader. I think that was meant to be more about ownership and investment and long-term commitments to space and community relative to both housing and all of the other uses. I'm seeing John lean in, and I'm gonna make some space for that, because, okay, everyone here has already had a chance a couple times. Did you want to add anything?
I, I was just gonna say, would, would it make sense? I mean, these are a list of items that are, are dream sheet, if you will. This is what we would like to see happen. Would it make sense to change the "will" in the letter A to "could" or "should"? So that way, I would hate, you know, I'm, I'm sure, as you would all hate to see a developer looking at this and say, well, I'm trying to build XYZ, that's gonna be rentals for a short period of time. If I look at that, that says I'm trying, that you're only trying to promote, you know, owner-occupied, I would hate to steer them from the development if they see that language. So if you change the overarching, you know, these are the nice things that we would like-- So if you change the overarching, you know, these are the nice things that we would like to see rather than they must be.
That can.
Right.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think could, maybe should, but I like could. Uh, but I really think the addition that makes it useful is also naming that could result in more of these in Lewiston and any PUD could have one or more of these. Like, I think it's that it's not a checklist that a developer needs to hit all of. And that we, as we set out the purposes, we, we think these are valuable things that can be achieved through a variety of different proposals in a PUD. Right? So like both and? Thanks. I'm going to go to Amy, then Alex, then Penthea.
I just wanted to speak to the point that.
Please, go ahead.
He was just raising. It could be, uh, the purpose to result in. So that's the intention and whether that happens. That's all I'll say.
Amy?
I would just suggest, uh, owner occupied or resident controlled properties or units instead of housing.
Yeah, that's great.
So I'm going to add some, some language here. So, uh, nurturing, um, ownership or investment models that foster, um,
Long-term commitments.
Long-term commitment, yeah, long-term commitments to community in place such as owner occupation, uh, uh, ownership control of units, enumerate a couple more. Yeah.
In purpose?
Mm-hmm.
Much like number seven, I think.
I think we're getting a bit wordy.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think this is a spot that it can be a little wordy. Because this isn't rules, this is spirit. Um, and, you know, uh, I think, uh, yeah, uh, we want to make sure that we don't have people thinking about it narrowly. I think is really the point.
Whereas that does make a ton of sense in eligibility, for example, like you either are or not eligible, you either are or not getting the bonuses, density bonuses. I think those are great places to be concise, but if there is a space for language.
Yeah, generally this.
It's only in purpose.
This needs to be expansive and clear that it's like you don't have to, this isn't a checklist that you have to meet. This is, you know, here's the wide spread of things that we'd like to see you have in a PUD. And I'm definitely on team PUD, uh, for the record. Um, not PUD.
We're going to get this before the end. I feel, I feel confident.
I think really making sure that it is expansive, that you, that it is painting a picture for the person reading this, that they could take one of these ideas, they could take all of these ideas.
And that our purpose is to have these ideas be more represented in the city in general.
Yep. And that this is, uh, you know, the way I see this, the way this reads is like, this is your chance to color outside the lines. Here's some guidance on how you can be creative, right? Here, here's a bunch of ideas. Pick a couple, pick more than a couple.
Thanks. Others? Before we move to section two, because we were headed in that direction. Great. So section two is eligibility. You'll see some edits made from our conversation last time where we got specifically to clarity that it's really about the number of units. And we've got some offered, some updated language there. There's some edits to three and four. Shelley, anything you want to lift up specifically? In section two, eligibility? Great. Any great jobs or clarifying questions that we'd like to offer staff before we move to section three? Give me a second. Section three, here we come. Lucy, is that on two or three?
Three.
Thanks. So section three is permitted uses. Um, to be clear, we did add industrial, which is what some of the other edits were there for. Number four offers some clarity, um, around locations as well as an opportunity to get outside of that in number four in the latter part. Both, before I bring it to staff, we'll see what Lucy's question is, then we'll hear from staff and then we'll go to Alex. Lucy?
Okay, in three, the last sentence, there must be a direct relationship between all collated is incorrectly used. There is only one L in co-located. If you do the two Ls, it means something else.
Did you say, oh, in three, three before the A?
Yeah, yeah. The last, the last sentence, there must be a direct relationship between all co-located uses that benefit their, co-located with two Ls means something else, has to do with words, not.
Yep. So you would just want that second one to reflect the first one, which is accurate, co hyphen located.
Yeah, either hyphen.
So only one L.
Or one L, but, okay.
With two Ls as a word?
Two Ls is a word and, but it, it's, I can't remember. I didn't keep it on my phone. Uh, but it, it's an.
It's not this word.
It's not this, it doesn't fit there.
And the first version is right, co hyphen located.
Yeah, you can do it that way or just co-located. Yeah. So, okay. So that's my comments.
Thanks. Anything you wanted to lift up for us before I bring it to Alex? Shelley?
Uh, not in three, I don't think.
Great.
Another orthography thing, uh, PUDs, uh, there shouldn't be apostrophe there. It's not possessive. And there's a couple of other spots where there's a, an apostrophe.
I'd like to just see it.
PUDS.
PUDs.
Lowercase s.
Lowercase s, yep.
I love this already. Thanks. Any other questions, uh, comments for section three? Thanks for reflecting our conversation so well from last time. Moving on four. Uh, four is long. It carries on to the next page. You'll see, um, an edit in 11 reflecting some of the numbers we started to put into place last time in our conversation. You'll see 12 was completely removed. And the new 12, uh, was last time's 13 was the minutes and then 13 is in there. So some renumbering. Anything you want to lift up for us in section four? Shelley?
My thing is under 12, the new 12, I did add trail or path. So that, that responds to a comment from the board about having more connectivity.
Yeah, thanks. Any questions or comments on section four? Section five, uh, no edits. Is that accurate? Anything you wanted to lift up? Nailed it out of the park, first round out.
I don't think we talked about this yet.
We didn't talk at all about five?
I don't remember having this conversation.
That makes sense why there was no edits.
Right.
We're not really a board that lets that happen. All right. Section five, flexibility allowed. Uh, Shelley, any thoughts about what you want this section to convey or any questions as you and staff drafted it that you'd like to pose to the board for insight specifically on? We agreed last time that we were not going to read every section in its entirety as it was written for us. And so we're going to focus specifically on where we have input, where we brought questions or where staff desires input. And that's just a process point reminder for all of us. Take it away, Shelley?
I think that staff felt pretty straightforward on those items, one through five, which were um, kind of really the criteria or reasons for being able to modify a standard. So just as a reminder, the board felt that all standards essentially could be modified if, um, if asked and if appropriate. Um, but these are sort of, you know, the guardrails for that process. And then there's some prohibitions on things that really shouldn't be, um, modified in number three.
Thanks. Were there questions or comments from the board? While you all look, I'll contribute one that's ridiculously small in grammatical nature, but in every other section, when you have an item under a number, it's a letter. And in this section, it went to numbers. And I don't know if that's specific about criteria, but it feels weird and also indented far.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
Couldn't, couldn't my ninth grade English teacher? You're correct.
Thanks. Yes. I hope your ninth grade English teacher's proud of me.
Mrs. Shapiro.
Thanks. Mine would not be because I was always disappointing her in every regard anyway. Yeah. I like go with that a long time ago. Um, all right. So I don't hear any. I see you all kind of getting through it. Can we move to section six? Are folks good with that? Amy on five or six?
I'm on a five and it's just, I, I had to read it three times before I understood it, which is, um, maximum allowed building height may not be reduced. Just felt really weird. So I would just say maximum allowed building house may not be changed.
Can be increased.
Well, it could be increased. Yeah.
The maximum building height can be increased. It just can't be reduced.
I see. And I read that.
How do you reduce a maximum?
No, I said that the maximum.
Can that be a minimum?
The maximum height is now 10 feet.
Right. So if the maximum height is 10 feet, you can't reduce it.
To eight feet, but you can increase it to 15 feet.
Right. So what's the intent?
The, the intent is that it wouldn't be reduced. So, um, really someone would be asking you for the ability to do something different than the ordinance, the, um, maximum building height, they can always build higher than that. Like, that's not something that they need approval for. Right? No, sorry, the reverse.
So this is.
Reverse, right? Putting a cap on the height of the building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is my point, like an applicant coming in.
Or can't be increased, not reduced. Is that what it should say? Okay.
Right. Do you like?
Yes, thank you.
Because fundamentally, if the applicant was like, I would like to develop this at eight feet and I would like for you to set the new maximum height for my PUD at seven feet because I want to fight about it. It doesn't make any sense for anybody and isn't really impactful if it's under the maximum.
I think what we meant was the, the restriction may not be lessened, but I.
Yeah. I think, I think whatever you meant could be conveyed in a way that supports all of us in the future and is maybe not quite this one.
We're going to work on that.
Yeah, yeah. I got faith. I'm here for that.
Yeah. Just as a, a side note, the maximum for most, uh, zones is 35 feet and that would be the bar.
But I mean, yeah, but we would be the one to change the maximum and an applicant wouldn't ask for a lower maximum for their own application, which is what the section speaks to, right?
Correct. Um, while we're talking about that though, is the board okay with that not being a standard that you can change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause you don't want weird sizes, you know, especially if they, if they would build something downtown. You don't want them to build a 15-foot high building. Well, no, I know, but, but you don't want them to do that because it'll look weird. It'll look like the stupid building on Lisbon Street that's capped at one, one, uh, yeah, I was on the planning board years ago when we did that. Yeah. It, I mean. Because the buildings burned next.
Currently pay taxes and maintain their space on this.
And they capped it and.
Let's not do that.
Hold, hold on. This sounds like we're talking about minimum building height as well.
Which brings me back to my further point around clarity for here.
So building height is not a standard that you can modify.
I think that's really the, what we're going for here.
I think that's right. And I think you're, the point that you're really making is in the NCA, we can't like put in a 15-story building like it's that.
Right, right.
Because I think that again goes to like, it is actually about maximum height. It is fundamentally about maximum height. And like, if you want to build a building at code that's only eight feet tall and you can somehow make the systems work great. Right. Amy?
I have, I have one more, one more comment about building height, which is Wedgwood is awesome. Like if anybody hasn't gone down Bartlett Street and looked at that Wedgwood development, that is a perfect example of design that completely matches the other stuff that's around, right down to building height, because I am at like eye level with the turret across the street and everything just balances and looks great. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah. Good on maximums, minimums and how we'll make that change.
Thank you, yes.
So, building height, shoreline zoning, groundwater conservation and septic stuff, those are non-negotiables. That's what we're going for here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do think just leaving it at building height is not to be changed. Okay. Section six, though we have not discussed it, uh, in this section, we talked a lot about density bonuses and how density bonuses are the way we incentivize some of those items in our purpose statement individually or accumulatively, right? And so you're seeing some suggested edits, edits in here that reflect those conversations, not that we have had this conversation specific to six. So before we dive in, um, both any thoughts on your edit that you edit that you've made, um, Shelley, and anything specifically you'd like to point our attention to that you're hoping for feedback on in this section?
I guess I, I do just want to state that staff, um, is probably going to need to do a little testing with this. So as, as you probably will have seen, if you've gone through it, if somebody were to ask for a number of these density bonuses, it goes above 100%, which is fine. You can have more than 100% increase of density. But we, um, I, I guess some of it, there's an element of arbitrariness here. So there's a value judgment that staff has placed when we've put this together for why something is a 30% bonus or a this bonus or that bonus. So I guess keep that in mind as you look at it. If there's something that the board feels is really significant and you want a higher bonus or something that you want to lower, I, I think that's a valid conversation to have.
Thanks. Anything specifically you want to know about the way you incorporated comments into the edits that we're seeing in number nine, 10 and three?
So number nine is a good, well, number three, we'll just briefly talk about that. That was to consider alternatives to open space that provide, um, an amenity that's more social in nature than, uh, wildlife or, you know, flood protection or something like that, that you think of with like green space, open space. Um, so that was to look at providing, um, something that, that would potentially have more of a, um, it, it really relates back to the, um, fostering enhanced social experience that's in the purpose statement, um, such as with isolation, um, breaking design and so forth. Number nine. So I think that was, that felt pretty straightforward to, um, to staff when we were putting it together. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we didn't want to incentivize someone who was coming in for a traditional subdivision and going to subdivide lots and sell them to then do a PUD because they could get density bonuses for that. So that's why we specify, which does not include individual subdivided lots for one to four family dwellings.
What does, what does that last part mean for one to four family dwellings? Can you?
Well, um, normally you would think one family houses. Um, so just a traditional subdivision where there's, you know, let's say 15 lots and each one's going to build a single family. But, um, under our current zoning, you could put two families on there. Um, or in, if you're in the growth area, you could do up to four units on a vacant lot. So we now, because of LD 2003, it's hard to just talk about single family housing anymore.
So that one to four family dwellings is to indicate what single family did look like now under that code in all of the spaces. So that's.
Yeah. Cause if you're selling.
When we read it.
If you're selling a lot to me, you as the developer don't really have control when I'm pulling a building permit that I didn't decide to do a single family, unless there was a restriction on what could be built there, you know, with an HOA or something.
So my understanding it, that each subdivided lot had to have at least five dwelling, five family dwelling units on it at least? Is that, is that how it, am I understanding that correctly?
I don't think so, no. Um, I guess what I'm trying to say is that the owner occupancy bonus is avail, what did I say? For the residential portion of a project, which does not include individual subdivided lots.
So basically you can get the bonus if it's not a traditional subdivision that's sort of geared towards.
Which you would expect to sell each lot and somebody would buy it and live in it. So you're anticipating them doing that anyway. It's more to incentivize, if I have a development where I have a number of units all on one lot, normally you expect that to be rental. So this incentivizes the condo-ing model or the, the communal kind of model where you're banding together.
Can we just say it that way to encourage?
We, we could.
An owner.
I could definitely rework this, so it's different.
Condominium or communal, communal, somewhere that way. Cause I don't know. I'm just not understa, like to me, I'm saying, oh, okay. Well, if a subdivided lot is buildable for a five-family dwelling unit, then I guess I get.
Yeah.
Which I guess is fine, I just don't know, I'm not very clear about that.
Well, and I think some of that language is required to be wonky, because we're figuring out the impacts of 2003 language, but at least an opening sentence that says what the density bonus is really for, and then, in technical terms, based in code, blah, 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 and that's where some of that technical language, but I think the first sentence being clear to intent would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Alex?
Yeah, I guess, I kind of get why we don't want to have people who could just do a subdivision, do a PUD, to skirt subdivision rules, but also, I feel like there's enough, like, sort of strings attached to a PUD where, personally, like, okay, someone wants to subdivide and do, like, sort of traditional subdivision model for the ownership portion, but like, guess what, they're putting in a ton of, like, public park space, and then there's going to be, like, a little, you know, commercial center they're putting in, like, part of me is like, well, maybe, because they're doing all that, like, sure, like, they could, they could do subdividable lots, and they get a bonus if they're meeting all these other things, I don't know. I don't know how to tie that together, but like, you know.
Yeah.
As long as there's, like, sort of sufficient things that make it different than a subdivision, then why not?
There need to be other themes that they've kind of bundled with it.
Yeah, I guess, that's sort of where I was going.
Yeah, I struggled a little bit with how to thread this.
Like, I think about, there's like, a development, it's like Eastern Gateway, or I forget what it's called, but it's in Scarborough, right off the Eastern Trail, and I think that's a subdivision, and like, all the houses are really close together, like, I think they were able to cram more in there, with maybe special permission or something, or I don't know, Scarborough might have different rules, but I think about that, like, you know, okay, if you're meeting some of these other themes, some of these other sort of spiritual things, I think that makes you different, and like, why shouldn't you get the density bonus where people get to own the land? Like, I think, I think forcing the sort of ownership model to be like, no, no, there has to be cooperative ownership of the land, maybe limits things.
May I add to that, which is, this, I don't know if this changes to Nine, or there's, like, a Nine B, or Ten gets bumped, and there's a second section, but I think about what we just talked about in terms of, like, the purpose is fostering more ownership, right, which we named could happen outside of housing, and so, whether this stays and then you add something because, for whatever reason, you want a different bonus, or a different definition, or we look at this and think about how the owner-occupied units, instead of the housing units, and the units, instead of housing, shall be, would this serve both purposes? Because if this is the only density bonus that actually ties back to and incentivizes ownership, whether it's housing, or business, or industrial, right, commercial or industrial, I don't know how this speaks to that, or what else does speak to that, incentivizing ownership outside of just housing, and maybe it needs a housing call-out, and then for all other things, here's the bonus, and it's less, or whatever, and it doesn't speak to your subdivision question, but as you rework this section, I think it's either, how do we rework it to meet those, that larger need, or is there a new copy Number Ten, and then edit the language, and let it be specific to all other uses outside of housing? I have trust, and I look forward to seeing what that looks like coming back, but I'm just naming for alignment to that purpose and that larger conversation, it feels like something is there, could be edited, or could be added, for what that's worth, or we're just saying we really like ownership, but we're actually, our purpose is really only around housing, and if so, we maybe want to revisit Section One when we're all done. That's all. Yeah, Mr. Roy?
Another thing I would just suggest, increasing the percentage to 25% above the allowable base per 10%. Again, this is a value judgment, and it is trying to express something that we want to incentivize, so I would say that we would want to really make it clear, look, you're going to get a much larger density bonus if you have a much larger.
I really appreciate that, because I think the question, and I think this is the question you're asking, like, if it does equal exactly 100%, and we're looking at a pie chart, we're kind of incentivizing based on, this is the most important, it gets the most, or it matches the other highest bonus, and I would just name, like, we do need childcare, but the 30% bonus is for childcare, and we need housing more than we need childcare, we need housing that supports childcare, and so, in that question of, like, how are we incentivizing, and how do the bonuses reflect our priorities, I both agree with what Mark offered, and would amend the childcare bonus to be more in line with or below housing from that perspective. That's my thoughts. Alex?
Yeah, I think, I was going to chime in, childcare, that seems, yeah, a little on the high side, I also would wonder, like, this kind of feels like, and then in 20 years, Lewiston has an excess of childcare facilities, maybe not a bad thing, but like, wondering about, are there other things that are like childcare that there's a need for in the community that could be fostered? I don't know, you know, is it medical care, is it access to groceries, you know, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but something to think about, you know, my favorite thing to talk about, we're doing a 20% bonus for traffic control, and a 5% bonus for public transportation, I would imagine that those should be closer together, you know, more similar, and I don't think, like, traffic mitigation efforts, that doesn't necessarily get people out of cars, that doesn't necessarily save space, because there's less parking needed, and maybe it was trying to touch on, like, active transportation, like biking or walking, but I'm not really seeing that in One. In Six, with public transportation, I think 5% seems awfully low to me, if you can get people out of a car, like, you think about it, two parking spaces, that's basically a studio apartment, if you loft the bedroom, like, that's a significant amount of space, 5% seems low, and then I would also say that I think we'd want to require more permanent infrastructure put in, just because I don't think we would see the results we want, we have just, like, free transit passes, but there's no place to sit to wait for the bus, or, we, you know, we moved the sign down the block and stuck it in the grass, but like, that doesn't make it any more pleasant, like, I think there has to actually be infrastructure put in there, and then I think also, maybe calling out things other than just public transportation, so either car share, or active transportation, maybe being just a little more expansive in that would be really important.
Shared?
Shared transportation, I think, just like, what we're really talking about is not private car ownership, everything but private car ownership is really the name of the game there.
Could I ask if we do just like a brief, like, stroll poll for each one, like, 20% sounds good, 10% sounds good? Just kind of go through each one, just to kind of fact-check.
I'd love to do that, once we hear all questions, because I think that's informing what our stuff is, so I will make sure we come back to that. Amy, did you have a question?
I do.
And then Penthea? Then I'll continue to look to my left, okay, great. Amy?
Yeah, I continue, sorry. So I'm just continuing to look at Item Nine, and I just would strike that last clause that says, which does not include individual subdivided lots.
Yes, I have done that, and I have some notes here about, I have notes.
Increasing the bonus?
Yeah, so 25% on the bonus, but I have notes about working on what the intent is, that they would be meeting other kind of elements of the purpose of the PUD ordinance in order to have that be available.
In the struggle that is your wordsmithing needs, if the best way to meet that is to have all other uses in a separate but similar, and housing in that one, like, feel free, if you can't get it all under that umbrella, Shelley, don't feel like you have to, for my needs, anyway. Was that everything from you, Shelley, so far on this one?
Yes.
In terms of clarifying questions on Nine?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
In this section, I wonder, to the earlier question that you were asking, Shelley, I wonder if there could be some sort of, you could earn up to X percentage of bonus points with these, using these as a guide, so you don't have to give 150% bonus points if we don't want to do it, so that was one thought I had, and then the other question I had, I wonder if I'm going to remember it. Oh, I wonder, should we be looking at, I'm sort of thinking about subdivisions, and should we be looking at, like, how is this different than that? I mean, you probably are more aware than, but I found myself just sitting with that question about how the subdivision rules compare to what this is saying in some kinds of ways, because I know there's some stuff that's different, but I'm stuck with, like, why would someone choose this instead of subdivision, and what would?
There are no bonuses.
What would be the bad thing?
As a starting point.
Yeah, so what is the, what would be the bad thing in that? So, I guess I, I'm just curious, because I'm not familiar with that.
It's a big question, that could have a really long answer, and I think some of it is, why are we, I think, Penthea, that some of what I hear you speaking to is, why are we, even though you love it, why are we considering a PUD, and how is that different from a subdivision, how would we explain it to others, and how does this ordinance speak to that?
Yeah.
Kind of, yeah, so that.
And to be pushing that, these options are there, like, with some enthusiasm.
So I'm going to ask you to not try to answer Penthea's question.
Um, yeah.
No offense, because I actually think part of what's missing here, whether it's in the purpose section or somewhere else, is like, why this is different, and what the advantages are, and the ability to explain that to the public, and I would want to give you time to answer that question well, and in a documented way that lives, and so, like, no offense, I think it's a really great question, please don't try to answer it in the moment, because I think it's the right question, and reflect on it. I know we heard a little bit about the differences and why between subdivisions in this last time, but I think the fact that we're finding ourselves, ask ourselves the same question a month later, and that it's not reflected in the document, is the question.
Yeah.
For me, and not just the content, is that fair?
That is, and I think once we define the theme and provide examples, and maybe in that section, we flesh out a little bit more why you would go this route.
Well, and if this lives, like, on the website, documents, and in code, I think it would also say, and for your own preferences, please link to subdivision to review alternatives for yourself, right, like I would hope. I want to see if there's anyone else to that question. Who are you pointing at?
Oh, no, I was, I was.
Okay. Did any of you have a question on my left? Okay. Go ahead, Alex.
I, so, reading the opening paragraph for Section Six, you know, it says, "The approved development theme, okay, strategies are utilized or relevant to the approved development theme, and have a clear benefit to the neighborhood and the public at large." I wonder, is there a way that we can include benefit to the public at large in more of these bonuses? Because a lot of them strike me as being very focused in on the residents of the development, or the development itself, and don't talk about maybe integration with the community as a whole, and I, you know, and I understand why it's that way, right, like, we're approving this project, this one thing, we're not really talking about all this stuff external, but, like, when we talk about road improvements, can we talk about connectivity? When we talk about transit, can we talk about how, you know, this is with the aim to, you know, improve the transit network? Can we talk about the plaza being for residents of this community, but also for the, you know, the city community at large? And I know this is more rules, but just, I think there's, like, little bits we could sprinkle in there to encourage that. I think it's really important that these developments don't become little cul-de-sacs, little islands, wherever they end up being done.
I'm going to offer my own thoughts for that, which is, I really appreciate the intent behind it, but I actually disagree. I think if the desire, and I think this goes back to the purpose, and I think this would then be, like, maybe another item that we are offering a bonus on, is that there is a density bonus relative to the way any of the above features are accessible to or benefits the public, and that it's its own call-out, in part, because I think, frankly, as a taxpaying resident of this community, the benefit of a really expansive PUD that is a gated community, of which I and my children don't actually get to use any of these, is the tax value that it adds to our community, and the way it improves our other services, and so, like, that is an inherent benefit in any of these, if someone is bringing a PUD forward, so I would be hesitant about the sprinkle approach. I do think that if the, if there is a bonus to be laid, that it would be laid separate, and I do think there's a benefit to that, but to some of the points that Mr. Roy has made, like, it would be great to see any of these, it would be even greater if we could anyone access them, but fundamentally, it would be, if, great if we saw enhanced development with these features already, and so, that's my only note of concern about that. Penthea?
There'd be a corresponding application form that goes with this, that might include a question about how would.
Public access to any of these amenities.
How this benefits the community, or something like that.
I guess we haven't thought about a separate PUD application, so they will be applying for development review, it would probably be separate standards that they're writing a narrative for, the way they would for a conditional use permit, or subdivision has additional criteria that they're writing a narrative for, so that's how staff was envisioning it, instead of a separate application.
I think there's a section in there.
And so, in that narrative, they're going to talk about what their theme is, they're going to hit on these different sections of the ordinance, and how they're addressing it.
I think they should have to, for your own sake, I think they should have to explicitly declare which bonuses they're seeking.
Sure, absolutely.
So that there's no, like, reversal of, I did the math, and I could have had this other bonus, and you didn't catch it, and give it to me, like, it's on you to identify your bonus, factor it into your application. And that's not on staff or the city to do, right?
Right, and then also, later on, when we look at the application, in their, their first meeting with the planning board, the intent is that they're going to talk about what bonuses they're looking for, so that they can get a feel from the board, if there's a reasonableness that you see for what they're asking for, because it's going to impact the design they're putting together, so they're going to want to get that gut check before they do the design.
So I have two overarching pieces of feedback for this section, and I, one of them may not actually be answered in this section, but might be in, like, a definition section that gets added, or somewhere else, but I think that it will be really important to name designated as workforce housing is, and designated as affordable is, and I offer that because I think it's, so I bought a building from the city once, of which I had to income-qualify my tenants, and so, like, it's not just, how do you qualify, but perhaps it's, for a minimum of 10 years, folks will qualify as below the median, and then workforce is at the median, or 110%, whatever those definitions are, but I would just flag there in these sections where you're actually saying, this is the bonus that you get, like, can I make it affordable for the first year, and when all my tenants rotate out, I don't have to make it affordable anymore, and did that work for me? So like, I think it's not just what qualifies as affordable housing, but the length of time in which we are asking for them to maintain that, that should be tied to the bonus.
You mean, when renting, when selling or renting new spaces? Right, not like, if I'm a resident, income-qualified the first year, but if I start to make more money, I don't have to get kicked out of my.
I correct that that's the, totally my intent.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, right.
But I would say, like, in my own experience, having purchased from the city and having to income-qualify, like, that's a question.
Yeah.
And this is the space to set expectations around the rents that'll be set, or the purchase prices that'll be set relative to, because I think, I mean, what we're saying really casually is, affordable is below, whether you're using mean, or median, or poverty, or like, whatever the qualifications are, and I don't know that it's parsed out as welfare workforce, and this is the section to be tying to definitions, but I also think, because of how you tie to definitions, this is the section to say, designated for a minimum of 10 years as, right, like, I just think that timeframe piece is important, and yeah, I really think that if we're trying to meet the purpose that we've named upfront, then like, the success is that residents who live there continue to live there, even when they have income that is disposable and gives them choice to live elsewhere, that's the whole point, right? And so, like, I actually think it's a really important thing to name, and it, it's not always clear. So, yeah, just naming that, but it just feels really important to have a timeframe on some of those pieces of which we're incentivizing, so, and where that lives relative to definitions, and how the timeframe is in here, and whatever. So, and where that lives relative to definitions and how the timeframe is in here and whatever work to be done. But I think affordable is really easy to find and I think workforce can have 16 different definitions in my experience. So we might, whichever one is, bless you. And then I just had an overarching comment to this, like, to the notion of how do we value these? How are we parsing them out and what happens when they add up to more than 100? Here's, I'm a market girl, but if somebody says, I'm going to bang out every one of these, I want every available density bonus available to me and I'm going to walk out of here with 285% density bonus. And they make those numbers work, so many hoops were had, like, go for it. If you can do that and, and create the financial letter and create a workable project, more power to you. And so I don't know that a limit is necessary. And it might even be clear to say like, there is no limit to the stackability of these density bonuses, assuming all other criteria has been met. And that's just my own, like, I don't think it's pick the three that mean if somebody manages to make some of these, which are really like focused on in-town lots versus really rural lots, if somebody's able to make that work, they have figured it out and good for them and let them have it because they put the work in and there is no downside, right? And so I just, do we cap it or not seem to be like a little bit of question tickling on the sides? And I say no. That's my own personal thoughts.
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on? Oh, right. And before we do, any other questions or comments on six?
Amy?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Shannon said. I agree that there needs to be a timeframe associated with it. In the old city rehab program that I accessed in 2017, like, you had to keep, if you were owner occupying a three unit, you had to keep the other two units affordable for the first two years as affordable rental units. So it was a short period of time. And affordable housing developments are like, that you get through federal warrants and stuff. You've got, those have to be affordable rental units for like 40 years, so a huge timeframe. So I'd like to see the timeframe be more like maybe five years because maybe after five years.
That was the one I was required, which was years before yours when it was reduced to two apparently.
There you go. Simply because we, I feel like you would also, especially there was something in here about the rental units need to look like the, the ownership units that, that maybe after five years, they convert to ownership units instead of rental units. So all these restrictions that we put on, I think we want to be mindful to, I like the timeframes, but I just would keep them more, more manageable.
Yeah. Yeah. Couldn't agree more. Any other questions or comments before we do a final gut check on the kind of value point system that's assigned? Great. Someone walk us through. So the first one that we name is 20% above the allowable base density for the installation of traffic control and road improvements, such and such. Folks, can we just get thumbs on these? Like, thumbs up is that's great. I'd like to see it modified as a zero and no, we really need to talk about it. Is it down? So how are we that? All right, so Alex and Amy, do you feel it should be higher or lower?
I think lower.
Yeah, I think either like, yeah, spell out what, what the traffic mitigation is supposed to do or, yeah, lower it.
All right. Thanks. We've got a number two, a bonus up to 10% above the allowable base density for approved theme, increasing the dedicated open space. Thumbs? Folks generally okay with the 10% as? That is a majority up. Alex will tell you his concerns after.
I would say make it a little higher, just like a smidge. If you're preserving open space and you can move more of the units out of the open space, I think that's a good thing.
Okay. Number three?
Sorry, is, how did people feel about making it slightly higher?
Folks on, that's a, Roger, can I get a thumb on how you'd feel about the open space density being higher?
By like?
Thumb.
15% instead of 10.
No, 10% is fine.
I'm seeing that from a couple of spots.
15 is fine.
Next bag. Okay. I can't, we're not going to get to agreement and that's not the point of this exercise. So we're not getting into numbers and I'm going to keep us moving. So number three is the approved theme. You can read it, we've already talked about it. This is 20%. Thumbs on 20% for theme relatively? I got a side. I got an up. That was, woo-hoo. Thanks. We're mostly good. Check with Penthea about any reservation she's got after. Okay. Four, we're talking about a bonusy, bonus of up to 15% for active recreation above the amenity space. Thumbs on 15% for recreation? Same. Great work on that one. Okay, turn in the page. Number five, we're talking about a 30% for childcare. We've already named we'd like to see it lower. I'm going to give you a 20 as a starting point reference to everyone else. Thumbs on 20% for childcare? How that feels? That's generally across the board. Roger, how are you feeling?
25.
And 25 from Roger. Anyone not, can't live with 25? Great. Bring on all the childcares.
25.
Yeah, I think there's some support there. Six, public transportation. We've got 5% in here. We've heard already that that's lower, so I'm just going to name 10% for our thumb exercise. How do folks feel about 10% density for transportation as named in six?
Did you say 10?
10%, yes. I pulled an audible because we'd already named the 5% fell low, so I'm giving us a 10%. Looking for Mr. Mercot to weigh in. He's a down and Alex is a sideways. Mike Mercot, sir.
10%.
Yeah, just, can you vocalize a little bit about your down, please? You'd like to see it lower, higher?
Right there at five.
Thanks. And you're sideways, Alex?
I'd like to see it higher because I think.
So it sounds like 10% is a good compromise for the two extremes noted outside the bell curve. That's great. Number seven, affordability. This is indexed at 1% increase for each affordable unit, maybe is what you want there, by the way? Yep. Right up to 250. 1% per unit that is affordable?
Does that hit right? I'm having, I'm struggling with the math, but if you guys understand it, that's fine.
Essentially 1% for each unit that's affordable.
For every 1% increase in, in unit.
Yep. Thank you.
So if you, if you have 100%.
If you have 100 units, then it's 1% per, you know, 1%, equals one unit, but.
But you can't get to 250, right?
Well, so here's my question. If I'm like, hi, I originally was going to do PUD with no affordable and everything that I'm proposing is an increase, then do I just get to name all of the baseline ones as well?
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
Yeah. Yep. I'll try it differently too and see if that helps. How do you know what the baseline is of which the increase is being mathed from?
Total number of units, right?
So we do have a requirement.
That's a question, right? I don't know that that's answered.
I can't remember where it is that we have the requirement that if you're doing an affordable, if affordable housing is your theme, then you have to have.
Wouldn't I choose affordable housing to not be my theme so I maximize my incentive? Because it's all from a baseline of which is subjective based on my application? If it was written in code somewhere that 10% of every PUD must be affordable and then I'm going to do 15%, then I get five, right? But if there is not something that is the standard applied to every PUD regardless of theme, then everyone is going to be like, well, I was going to do none. But now that I'm saying I'm going to do some, all of what I'm doing is an increase. So that's the flag that I've got on this one.
Yeah.
For what it's worth. So I don't, I don't, where's the stake that you're measuring from and how do you name that in here? In general, I'm, I mean, and it could be from zero. So if I'm bold enough to say, I'm going to do a PUD and everything is affordable housing, that's my theme, then go ahead and reward me because I could have chosen to do zero, right? So that's the, that's the increase piece is the part that I'm struggling with for what it's worth. But I like 1% for each unit. I think that's tangible and concrete. And again, if you can get to it and make your math work, please do bring it. It's my own thoughts, though. So with that clarity.
Really?
Yeah. So, yeah, so can we just pretend for the sake of this conversation, it's one unit for 1% of the project? Is the density bonus? Knowing that you can bring us something back with further thinking next time?
So I think it's 1% for 1%, not 1% for one unit.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Great. But that all the percents are incentivized and there's no baseline of which we're adjusting from for a thumb, for a thumb check right now. All right, so 1% for 1%.
Okay, so now I still have a question. About the 250. If it's 1% for every 1% over.
Could never get to 250, could only get to 100%.
So the 250% is a bit of an outlier and that's because of, I think we were responding to what's already in the ordinance related to the LD 2003 that required us to provide a 250% bonus over the current allowed density in a zoning district for affordable housing when it meets the state affordability housing requirements and is in certain parts of, of the city. So.
So those two separate bonuses then?
Yeah, they probably are. So we should probably just take out the 250%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was my recommendation.
Yeah.
In fact, that, that last. That last sentence can just be eliminated. And then it probably doesn't make sense that you would be able to stack the two.
Right. Amy?
And it would also be great to have a, for example, and just like give an example right there so that people can look at the math and understand it better because I still don't understand it.
All right, so 1%. In all the ways that we'll see this come back to us, just focus on the 1% for 1% in this moment. Let the 250 slip your mind because we'll see this again with edits. Thumbs up if 1% feels like the right amount.
1% for 1%?
1% for 1%.
One over one.
Okay. Amy, have you weighed in?
I said sure.
Grace. Those are thumbs across the board. I would name, I'd be curious once you do some of that clarification if that's actually enough. So you think of like, six units being, six dwellings being built, for example? The maximum you could get is 6%. And what is 6% of six that gets you to what, another unit?
Well, no, no.
So if it's, so if it's six units and, and three of them are affordable, that's 50%.
Aha.
Yeah.
And this is why math examples will be great, right? Thanks. All right, then I also feel really good about 1%. So general same application for workforce, 1% for 1%. This time it's workforce. All other things pretty much the same as last time. That's a good one. Love the linger. Number nine, knowing that there's some clarity coming in this one, we're looking at 10%.
Someone said 25.
Yeah, and we, we got it to 20. So let's, I'm going to sub in the 25% we talked about last time. There we go. If this read 25%, how do folks feel about owner occupancy and 25% as the bonus density?
25% per 10%, which means you could get to 250%.
Thank you, per 10%. Mr. Mercot, you're the only thumb I haven't seen yet.
Still trying to read it.
You have majority thumbs, but is there?
Oh, I did.
No, we were looking for a thumb. You're good. I didn't, did I miss it?
I think you were looking down, Shannon.
Thanks. Yeah, please, hold me accountable. I appreciate it. Number 10 is a 10% relative to buffering and screaming. Screening, not screaming. Love for you to enforce that. Good luck. Which page is screaming on in the, in the applications? It's screening, guys. Buffering and screaming, 10% bonus density. Thanks, right side.
Yes.
Great. Did anybody else see Mike's hand?
I didn't get my head around my comment to last meeting about empty towns. Increase, increasing the density just because you buffered it in may not be necessarily a good idea. But not fully understanding it. I'll just say yes.
Thanks. I think the buffering and screening is for the entirety of the property and where they might be going above and beyond. And not just like to hide things.
Creating an alcove in a seniority.
I think that could be well loved. It is only 7:35. It is still a little bit light out and we're going to forge ahead to Section Seven, which has been renamed and has open space requirements. Shelley, is there anything that you would like to lift up or point us to as we dig into the section?
I don't believe I do. Craig authored this. Is there anything that jumps out?
Craig! Anything you'd like to point out in this section, lift up for, for us to check in with you on?
Give me one moment, please. Yes. So we had taken this from different examples as we were doing our research. One thing that is probably of some importance is number three. And that is where we specify that the required, you know, if you're doing the open space, then we would require you to have that open space as one large chunk rather than a buffer strip that is less usable. We've seen that with past projects and I think that's an important note. That's all.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I heard a lot of that makes sense. Any questions?
What, what does narrow buffer strip mean? So like, people adding up like the five feet around the property perimeter type of thing? Or like, or would that like also encompass like, oh, I have 10 or 25 feet around a stream that runs through the property and?
The former. So if you.
Okay.
Exactly that. So you have like a 10-foot strip going all the way around the, the full development that is, you know, it's really only used would be maybe if it were a walking trail or something like that. And I think, for your point about the stream, I think there is some language here about allowing that to be altered if, if it doesn't fit the needs. Like, if there is a stream that would naturally be a long winding, you know, strip, that should be buffered and that, you know, wouldn't necessarily be one large piece. So there, there is some flexibility in this draft, the outline here, for circumstances.
And then I was just wondering, because, you know, we talk about commercial industrial and all that, like, is there better language than homeowners association?
Can you reference the number you're pulling from since you've moved?
So 5CI. Yeah.
It could just be owners association.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other thoughts on three before we jump, jump in elsewhere? I have my own thoughts if there aren't others yet. Which is just, I like the intent that we're aiming to do there. I don't, I wonder if it's like, in one primary and large piece or a minimum of one? Because like, if you can get two big five-acre holdouts in a 20-acre PUD, then more power to you. And does one have to be larger than the other? I don't know. Because I understand the intent behind there and I don't know how this goes to like eligibility or qualifying kind of components. But I think about what it looks like for, if the intent is that, you know, the open space is contiguous, usable for multiple purposes and a large portion of the lot, then like say that in the intent so that we do have the freedom and that there's something there to go back to instead of like, well, you've given us two pieces and they're almost exactly the same and that's not, because I don't think that's the intent. But in terms of, I like the flexibility for the board to be thoughtful about the review and the different layout and topography and, but I don't think the intent is to only have but I don't think the intent is to only have one. I think it's for you to qualify your open space theme. You have provided a minimum of one big one. Could be four big ones and that'd be awesome, right? And so I don't, and I don't want someone saying like, oh, how do we get those four big ones to be combined? When maybe that doesn't make sense at all. So just in terms of how we actually review and apply that piece. And I'm not, please do not get technical, like it must be twenty-three percent. Don't do that. Um, but just clarify the intent around the, the use of the open space.
Because the intent is really sort of like making sure that it's usable open space. You know, it's not like people are farming a two-foot wide path that runs all the way through the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So like, yeah, finding a better definition of usable rather than one, because like maybe one big solid piece is not usable. Like if it's for farming, one big field may not be the best.
Yeah. Does that make sense? This is my.
It, it does. We'll work on some.
Yeah.
Language for that.
I think it's close, but I think just in terms of like the sticky spot, some times we find ourselves in reviewing an application and them saying, well, like, we looked at this language and we've provided you one spot that's open space. I don't know if that'd be enough for us to like have that discourse and hold an applicant accountable or ourselves accountable, is all. Anyone on three? Craig, that was the only one you lifted up. Was there any other section?
There was one while I was sort of looking through, um, on one. So it does specify that the open space needs to be the net lot area.
Yeah.
And that would specifically exclude, uh, you know, wetlands or bodies of water, places that would not be developable. So that sort of, that couldn't be counted towards the open space that you're setting aside. You would have to do fifty percent of, you know, land that would otherwise possibly be developable.
So I struggle with that. And here's why I struggle with that. And I don't know that this is, like, don't design to the bottom. So if this is, if you know our land in Lewiston, that this is never gonna matter, say that, totally. But if, um, if a PUD included like a hundred acres, a big space, and in there is a small pond and that pond is one of the amenities that'll be available to folks, like that should be named and counted. In fact, I think a lot of people would see that as open space that they are looking to maintain access to. And so, like, I get the math part and the calculation around it and I, you know, I think of, you know, if you look at no-name pond and the fact that no one owns the pond because the pond is shared and it's really the shoreline that's owned, then like that makes sense in this scenario. But in the cases where the entirety of the bog and trails through the bog are approved and there's, you know, protected, that actually counts in terms of preserved open space. And wouldn't be developable by definition. I don't know how you reconcile those two things in this section, Craig, but I'm just lifting up the like, there, there are some uses and some places where I can see the benefits of land that you're calling undevelopable. In my mind, should count towards the way, because it's the way in which frankly, the overall intent is to have someone look at that largely undeveloped plot and be like, but that's an amenity if I put these things around it. And we don't want to disincentivize that by saying like, well, it doesn't count here.
And I wonder if there's a way to make it, because like, in those cases where you have that undevelopable land, like, you want to sufficiently, you still want to have sufficient conserved land around that to make it, you know, it's like, you don't want houses right on the pond. So yeah, I don't, I, this feels like maybe a problem someone else has tackled and we could, we could pilfer some language here.
I mean, we have enough wetlands, even if it's not, somebody has the opportunity to own an entire small body of water on their parcel. I do think that there's some like trail use and stuff in lands of which would not be developable otherwise and of which is what we're trying, exactly what we're trying to incentivize with this and that would negate that value for a developer.
Yeah.
My two cents. Okay. Thanks for pointing out number one, Craig.
Is, uh, while we're on number one, I had a question about that.
Go ahead. John's leaning in with an assist maybe on number one.
Oh.
No, no.
Um, like, do, is the intention here to conserve it as its existing use? Or could like someone be like, okay, well, like here's some forested land. I'm gonna mow down all the trees. I'm gonna build my PUD. And then I'm going to turn some of it into farming land. Which, like, I don't think is a bad thing, uh, for, for the record. Or, uh, I'm going to.
Are you trying to differentiate between conservation for these listed purposes and conservation for historical points of these purposes?
Yeah, or is this like, are you conserving the land as it is or are you conserving it in some other way or actively managing it? Like, those are kind of different things.
But does it matter for this purpose? Does it matter? It's a genuine question.
That was, that was the question, like, intent here. Uh, I don't know.
Yeah. I, I would argue if someone's gonna conserve twenty acres of farmland because they either tilled new twenty acres on their previously light industrial coated lot. Or they have historical farmland and it's twenty acres and they're gonna conserve it for continued use, we still got twenty acres of conserved farmland out of it?
Yeah. I guess, I guess where I think about it is like, I feel like these tools for like open space and conservation of land, it's usually conserving the existing use. So, I don't know.
So, because we've always done it that way?
Well, not necessarily because we've always done it that way, but I think there is like an intention around, like.
There is a historical intention and assumption made in open space that is about conserving current uses.
Yeah, and like that's something that benefits the community around where this is going in, right? Like, you know, keep, keeping some, so.
It wouldn't preclude that. Like, it wouldn't exclude that, right?
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think it through. I, I, I don't have the answers here, Shanna. I'm just trying to think it through a little bit.
I think I'm assisting you in processing out loud the fact that like, it's the right question to ask, but I don't see any language that makes one choose between conservation of historical use or adoption of a new use of which are all these uses and that is what the purpose and, and is intended to conserve. And so I'm helping you talk it out.
Okay.
It's a, it is a good question in that ideally we'd be conserving land that's good for the thing. So I suppose I could say that I'm creating wildlife habitats and wildlife corridors, but if it's an area where it's not near where animals are because it's in the middle of the city, then suddenly it's not good for wildlife habitat and wildlife corridors because they're not getting from this point to another point.
Yeah.
Or same thing with farming. You want it to be soil that's appropriate or, um, you know, slopes that are appropriate. So it's not creating a lot of erosion.
Yeah, I think like.
But I think that, I think there's hopefully enough flexibility here in the process for when someone comes with a plan to the planning board, the planning board can say, well, why have you chosen to do, do this? You know, is it a waiting burden, water or foul habitat under DEP? Is it a deer wintering area? I mean, those things are mapped, so you can ask the questions like, well, are, what are the soils here? Are they good for farming? You know, you can ask for that information. Potentially.
Penthea, you had your hint up.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think that's right. And I think this will be read as and most often used for historical use. And for that reason, I don't think that it's necessary, in my opinion, to exclude a future use of which not has been historical, which I'd love to hear that argument. And that's all this does is allows us to hear the argument. Okay. Alright, so we hit on one. We hit on three. Did any board members have any item they wanted to lift up for review or discussion?
Of this whole list?
Yes, of the whole list. Thank you, Amy.
So, uh, in item five, where it talks about the, um, like the maintenance of open space by establishing homeowner association or whatever. I just want to note that in this. Five, five D, correct. That I don't see that there's anything in this whole ordinance that talks about not open space requirements, but common space requirements, like in a condo association, right? So you've got a four-unit building and the shared, the whole yard is shared. Well, it's not open space, it's common space. And having a requirement that people who are contemplating some kind of a development that must have an association, making sure that they've got that all figured out in advance and they actually know how to do that. And it's gonna be legally viable as, as a condo or condo association, I think is an important requirement when we're talking about a plot that doesn't have separate deeds.
Does the last sentence in C one speak to what you're talking about?
No, I mean, because this is all about open space, which is like shared open space as opposed to common space.
Thank you.
So a separate section that.
I think you need a separate section about common, common space.
Yeah.
Requirements.
And that that speaks to some of the, could potentially speak to some of the infrastructure investments that we named around potential common spaces. Whether it's a sheltered bus waiting station or, just as one example of like tying that in. But yeah, I do, well, it's funny because even as I was reading the open section's piece and it's talking about, in one unique natural or cultural features on a property, that's the only space in this entire item which speaks to an urban or smaller lot, common space. And it feels shoehorned into open space and I don't know how we'd be clear, because we've talked about common space being, maybe it's a courtyard, maybe it's the shared kitchen. You know what I mean? Like, we talked about a couple of different things that it could look like. And none of this really speaks to that other than that like one, no, a cultural. Because otherwise, everything else that's in one is assumed to be on a larger parcel that's not in town. And we've done a lot of work to make sure the PUD could work on a less than two-acre lot in town. And so like, obviously, open space would not be their theme. But to what extent is the shared space or common spaces that we've talked about in this discussion? So yeah, it's a great, maybe it is another section.
I think it's another section because it could cover shared driveways. I mean, it's, it's anything that as you're trying to increase the density, you know, you've got stuff that's not open but is shared.
We're gonna head into section eight, so this is last call on section seven. Seeing done, section eight, formerly nine. Anything that you, planning team, I don't know who drafted this section, would like to point us in the direction of? And planning board, feel free to prepare your own comments for any item in eight. Shelley, was this you?
So I, I just want to point out that, um, this, uh, this is pretty outlining, if you'll, if, if you don't mind me saying that. So, um, we're still gonna probably have to dig in the details for, for how this actually looks. But we thought we hit most of the high points for what was gonna need to happen as far as the procedure. So.
Great. Anything, anyone on the board wants to point out or ask or fall in love with?
I think it's pretty comprehensive and once you feel, you know, fleshed it out a little bit, uh, I think it will be, you know, at that point, we can make further comments on specific, specific items.
The only thing I noticed in this section, it feels useful to name which ones are public hearings and which ones are like workshops. Not that we would preclude, sometimes we allow public comment in a non-public hearing item if they are here and would like to. But I think it might be useful, like, the con, I don't think the public being present commenting on us responding to or them getting riled up in general around a conceptual pre-application conference, for example, just so they can find out like, we just want to ask the questions. We want to take your temperature. Like, that should be a conversation that while publicly available and transparent, shouldn't set the tone for, but I don't want that in my backyard. There's plenty of time for that and the other two public hearings that come. So I just think naming like that kind of explicitly in these steps, Shelley, might be helpful both for us and for a developer who's saying like, hmm, what's that pre-conference look like? It's not that, right? Same for notice to a butters and all the times you might or might not need to notify people. Just makes it clear where you guys have your work too. Last call on section eight. Moving to section nine, which is the phased plan process. Anything you want to lift up from this one item in section nine? Can't tell if Craig's getting ready to lean in or if that's a Shelley comment. Okay.
Just broadly, we had the, the short versions. We took this from Auburn.
Great. I will tell you, I've had a number of conversations with developers who would love to see more alignment between the two cities as they work in both cities. That's wonderful news, actually. Any questions or comments, uh, on section nine, phased plan process? Great job, everybody. Shelley, talk us through what your, yep, oh, Mr. Mercot.
I'm just curious since we invoked Mike Gatto's name right from the first meeting where we approved hearing this. If he has any thoughts to share with us since he's listened to the whole process today.
We would invite it. Will you just go to the podium for me? This is your three minutes to pontificate and have input into our future PUDs.
Food.
Mm-hmm, and food. You don't have to. You can say thanks, but no thanks. But for, for public record sake, it would be nice if.
I would say that I've been pushing staff for twenty years to do a PUD ordinance. Uh, because Auburn has a PUD ordinance that is extremely effective for commercial, retail, industrial uses. Also works for housing. What I read and what I saw in this document, which I got Friday, I don't see enough there to help real-world situations I have coming at me today of how I'm gonna get a project approved in Lewiston because there's really not a lot of dialogue about the other. I, I heard a couple, a long time here about housing and ownership. Okay, I didn't hear anything that's gonna help me get projects approved in Lewiston that I need to get approved this year. And we'll see what happens and where you come, but you have a lot of focus on housing. You already have cluster subdivisions. You already have affordable housing. You already have this, 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 and this. It sounds like you're repeating that stuff. In Auburn, we don't have public streets in the PUDs. They have some. But we have flexibility so that we can do a commercial development, get it done, change it, adjust it, and it happens very nicely. I didn't hear that dialogue tonight and maybe I'm missing something.
Some of that was in sections one through four that we talked about at length at our meeting previously.
I read them.
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't see the heavy emphasis on commercial. I mean, is commercial gonna be required to do open space? In common areas and all that other good stuff? Or is commercial gonna be able to be developed? And the other thing that I see is that Mod Almond Plaza Restaurants, those were approved as a six thousand square foot footprint for a restaurant with common facilities. And the only thing that could get sold is the restaurant, or leased is the restaurant. The common facilities were maintained by the association. And I'm not sure I'm seeing that in what I've heard and what I've read. And that flexibility is tremendous. Same thing happens to housing. If you can, uh, a community I live in in Florida, I own a lot, I own a house, but I have all kinds of common facilities that we pay for. I, I don't know if, if you're gonna get it from what you're doing here. Technically, I don't see an advantage to what you are talking about. I am a technician. I'm the guy that has to put it together. I don't see, I, I love what you're talking about, but I don't see the benefit to take the largest landowner in Lewiston because he has a project that doesn't fit your ordinance and tell him to buy a land in Auburn so he can do a PUD. That's what I've had to do dozens of times. So I, I would love to see more flushed out about what you're gonna do for industrial. You know, could the project we went through on Promenade look different? If it was a PUD with no street, no frontage right away, could it look a lot different? You know? Exit eighty can't be developed without public road access. You've got public road access and public transportation improvements in a PUD should be all common, should be maintained. Should be maintained by the people, not, city shouldn't. My opinion, now, again, I'm the technician.
Well, I mean, I think we got to that point of clarity last time. I would say the piece that I'm, some of this, I think, is the opening statement and I think fleshing out our philosophy, which you heard a lot of talk about tonight in the purpose section, from the technical components that we went through clearly. I will say the thing that I, I would really like to echo and amplify out of your feedback, because some of it I think we are addressing and you'll see that hopefully. I think someone might be like, what's the, who's the message targeting? Is it targeting people with this level of skill, this level of technicality? And have we named that clearly enough? Or is it targeting people who are philosophically looking for small planned unit developments, right? And they're then bringing it to somebody like him with technical skills. And I think this document needs to meet both needs. And so that might be the kind of introduction piece that we talked about. I would just lift up that we did have some conversation and I'm not sure. not sure that the bonus density structure, which is part of the technical piece, incentivizes non-housing, other uses enough. And we got into the weeds a little bit in our last conversation about the mixed use. And I don't know if that serves the purpose of like just industrial or just commercial enough outside of relating it to where it might be a mixed use in a housing. And it might be the intent at this time is not to incentivize business and it's just housing and that's the future of Lewiston and the way we're focusing on it. But we should be clear about that and answer this question. Mr. Roy?
Do you mind just, um, if you have time, providing some feedback? You said you read through the, uh, this version of, just some bullet points of where you have seen success or where Auburn's version is much easier that we might want to consider adding. I mean, nothing in depth, but I'm just, I mean, nothing, you don't have to spend a lot of time on it. I'm just saying, it would be helpful to us to say, well, all right, well, one thing that we're...
I think he's asking for written follow-up but not for you to bullet point in this moment.
Right, no, that's what I'm saying, right.
Lucy?
Can, can we get a copy of Auburn's or PUD or ordinance that we could maybe steal from them? Why not?
Sure. Staff, staff has looked at that extensively.
You know, I mean, if he says that, that Auburn's is much more user friendly, and that's what I'm getting from, from Mr. Gatto, is that, that they're looking to help the developer do what they want to do. And ours is not. And I would like to see what Auburn says, I mean, I'd like to see their ordinance and compare it to what we're saying and, and maybe steal a little more of theirs than just that last paragraph on number nine.
I'm hesitant for that to be the takeaway from Mr. Gatto's comments. I would love for us to have the, the PUD to, to look at the ordinance from Auburn if it's useful. I want to name and respect the work that staff has done to both provide us, sorry, to provide us with the excerpts from Auburn as well as other examples. And I think this fundamentally, just candidly, I think this goes to, are you and the developments that you do and have had to move to Auburn for the target of the purpose and intent of this work? And if it isn't, that's okay, right? And I think, great, I'll continue to affirm to Auburn. I'm not saying I want that, but I'm just saying like, I think that fundamentally goes back to like, what's the intent and what are we trying to convey and incentivize and to make space for the fact that, how do we learn from and then supplement the work that Auburn is doing and not try to replicate it by point? And I, and I think fundamentally, we've been presented with the, a very intentional alternative to just a copy and paste of Auburn's on purpose. And that there's been a lot of work and that we were apprised of and involved in that work. And that that was a big piece of last time's discussion. I know, I would still love to see it because I think maybe the point might be the way it's technically displayed or the ease of writing, and there might be other benefits to it, but naming that substantively, I think we've gone down a path of which we set intention around and I don't want to second guess that in its entirety. And I'm just naming that.
I don't, I don't want to displace what staff has done and what you've done. You've had a great dialogue here tonight, and I see that you're all personally involved and it's, and it's a good dialogue. And if that's what you want for Lewiston, that's what you do. That's what you should do. I'm looking at it from the technical purposes and, and in my world, I, I represent one of your largest landowners. And he is industrial, commercial, hopefully retail and other types of uses. And Mount Almond Plaza may not be the prettiest thing in the world, but it is a project that was done as a PUD. And there's multiple other PUDs and industrial PUDs that allows you to build it in phases, you declare it in phases, all the taxes centers that they have. They are, you, you have kind of defined a residential PUD. You, you may need to look at Auburn and say, okay, well, the commercial PUD standards, let's put some commercial, this is what we expect commercial. This is what retail we expect to look like.
Yes, that is what you're hearing me say.
Well, because like, didn't, didn't we in our last conversation say, oh, well, Auburn just does this for commercial, they don't do it for industrial? They do industrial as well?
They do industrial, they do residential.
It's for all their uses.
And then recreational at the, uh, Montdale, Fox Ridge and, uh, at Lost Valley.
Yep.
The specific recreational hundred acre parcel, keep, keep the ski area active, do this and help them build and help them do things. So, no, they, they do them all and they list them independently. So, residential, commercial, industrial, I've got an industrial one over there, I've got commercial ones over there, I got retail ones over there.
We, before our last session, so at our last session, we were reviewing the first version of this, but in the session prior of which stemmed some conversation that allowed us to get to this, we looked at specific examples. The majority of them were residential, but they weren't only. And we did look both at Auburn and other communities that, so we pulled some of the, we specifically pulled some of the examples that you're referencing, viewed them, talked about them and did name the process, both in Auburn and in other communities too. I would like to arc, to lift up what Mr. Roy invited you to do, which is to share any input, particularly, I think it'd be helpful around the presentation of technical details that attracts a developer and engineer.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So, just so the board knows, um, Mr. Gatto and staff, myself especially, have had many conversations regarding this topic. And the plan has always been, and, and Mr. Gatto can back me up on this, to, to bring him in as early as possible to help us with this, to give him a, a copy of what we come away with so that he can kind of review it and put a, a, a different lens on it. Um, our plan was to come away from this meeting and provide that. So, that has been in the works. Uh, we just haven't had a product to, to give him yet.
I appreciate that you started with the board.
And so I just, I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that that is something that we, we have been working on with Mr. Gatto behind the scenes.
Thanks. Thanks for starting with us. Candidly, I just want to really name like, I think that is the right place to start and I'm glad you have plans to engage other stakeholders. But yes, we are your primary stakeholder. We appreciate you recognizing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mercott?
Thanks.
Sometimes when you get immersed into a process like this, you can't seem to think outside the box. That's why I asked Mr. Gatto to step up and, and you make, rattling off the points and I'm going, why couldn't I have thought of that during the process? I'm looking at section three and seeing commercial, residential, industrial, mixed use, and I've written down retail and recreational because of Mr. Gatto's comments. One favorite comment of a lot, a lot of people here in Lewiston, from, um, coffee shop and such, is we always lose retail to Auburn. Well, we need to do something to focus on that and maybe we can make a more full bodied, uh, ordinance. Uh, this is a good starting point and include the other things and enhance upon what we've already done the last three weeks.
I'm going to offer my own thoughts on that, just for kicks and giggles, which is, I think that it is a keen observation that this is and our discussions have been largely geared towards residential and how it does include these other pieces. Uh, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't care if our first PUD is residential designed and then we think, because I think about the missing density bonuses for those other uses, particularly if it's like an industrial only or commercial only PUD. And I, I actually feel like we had a conversation that both incentivized for focusing on residential as the primary focus and in being inclusive of the other uses, but not aiming for this PUD ordinance to meet all of those needs for all of those uses. And I think that we had a conversation about, and that might come next. Um, and so I'm just, I'm helping us have a collective shared memory, first of all. And second of all, which might be to your point, like, stay tuned. We're excited. We got industrial into the residential focused ones and this isn't, um, I think the only bite at the apple. And, and I don't, I don't want to, this is my own personal, I don't want to see this come to me with six new density bonuses that are specific to all of those other uses and for us to try to jam pack this, that it has been intentionally designed for some of what you just described very accurately and does not meet all your needs. I don't think the intent was out of the gate. And I think we're naming really clearly how to include those other uses in this need and how this is, housing is a specific need. There's some things Auburn's doing really great. And how do we focus on the thing that we have the most opportunity to also do great? And then layer in industrial. So, a PUD for industrial might look very different from this and I would, I would hope so, frankly. I don't want to see this try to be everything to everyone. And I think we named that kind of a starting point as we move down this pathway, which is to say, give your input, stay tuned. But there could be some awesome stuff along the way. And look, we got some industrial into this one, which is really exciting. Any other comments from staff on next steps that you want to set expectations for? Are we just going to assume balls in your court for a bit? There's some feedback input rounding out things and at some point we'll see this on an agenda?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
I would like to note that when that time comes, you should assume we need all materials new and included in the packet. And that we cannot be expected to hold well all of the items from conversation to conversation if there's months in between.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. Really appreciate that. Okay. I think that we still have an agenda. I think the next item is reading of the minutes. And I'm seeking a motion to adopt the March...
Good night.
Nope. Okay, you were saying good night. It's okay. Seeking a motion to adopt the March 24th, 2025 draft minutes.
So moved.
Thank you. From Lucy, a second from Roger, would we call the roll?
Roger?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Lucy, yes. Mark?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Great.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. So moved. Have a wonderful night, everybody.
Thank you.
Great. So you're going to get my PUD papers and I'm never going to see those ones again. I'll get them ones next time. Love that.
Good.
Yeah.
And every once in a while, there's a, we included that six months ago in the first review and now the applicants are out of...
Stay with me, I don't know where that lives.
I know.
Just, you know.
Some space next week. We love the paper.
Cool.
Middle of the week.
I don't know.